Good evening, we're calling to order the city council meeting and we're going to have the invocation led by Pastor Bill Crawford of the New City Church and then the pledge of allegiance will be led by council member Dr. Don Brandt, please rise.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight to share with you, it was a year ago this month that New City Church became New City Church, we're where the former First Baptist Church used to be and as they were dwindling congregation, we were at Vista Mar High School for seven years, so we merged together and formed that, so, pleasure to be here, let's pray. Dear wise and loving God, we want to thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening for your many blessings, for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We ask your blessing on the people who have been called to lead this community, not only these elected council members, but also our police and fire personnel, our public works and parks and recreation employees, our planning and building and library staff, our city manager and clerk and treasurer, our civic organizations and our churches. Remind them that they are not only leaders but also servants and that it's their responsibility and ours to serve the common good. Grant them and us the wisdom and the courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. Would you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and the issues of our times, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement? I pray for the agenda set before this council tonight, please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city of El Segundo and may they and we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice and by the spirit of love, may it be so, amen.
Please join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, thank you.
Alright, thank you Pastor Crawford, New City Church and thank you Dr. Brandt. We have presentations this evening, I'm guessing at least half the audience is here for the parade, which is great, the other half might be here for solid waste, on the solid waste, that sounded very strange, on the solid waste item though, I just want to say that we're gonna do public communications after the presentations and anyone that wants to speak to the solid waste item specifically can wait until that item comes up, we're actually gonna move it up on the agenda, so you don't have to speak during public communications, it will be time for you to speak during that item and that time will be after the staff has presented, so you've had an opportunity to hear the staff report before speaking. Alright, without further ado, excuse me, we have a presentation to 2018 Holiday Parade winners, I think we have, fortunate to have Marcia Hansen and Linda Johnson here from the chamber, let's give them a warm welcome, shall we?
Thank you very much Mayor Boils and members of the city council, thank you for not mixing the parade up with solid waste, that's always a positive way to start, we are thrilled to be here tonight, this is one of our funnest things we do all year long is award our annual parade winners, look at that, what a great looking group, right? So we're gonna start with our best performers for adults and that is Rusty Frank Lindy By the Sea dancers. You wanna come down with your pictures? We're gonna go over here and do a picture. They're official, come back. Oh, I guess that'd be official, oh yay!
My group is in class right now, we teach swing dancing, they're already in class, so I guess I represent. They should, thank you very much.
Alright, alright, here we go guys, couple photos, one, two, and, one more, alright, thank you so much.
I just noticed our parade MC Dennis McNeil is in the house, hey Dennis, he does a fabulous job along with Dale Ingram, our best performers children is the Kelly Irish School of Dance.
Alright, oh sure, 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 yeah, yeah, over here, there's room over here, one of you ladies, no? There we go, alright, very good, here we go guys, and, couple shots, one more, thank you so much.
Hold on, hold on, oh yeah, the parents. You too Chris.
I believe that's the award winning Kelly Irish School of Dance, right? On several areas, the best use of theme which was seaside yuletide this year, hey Dennis, for children's was Girl Scout Troop 8745. The best use of theme adult is the El Segundo Recreation and Parks Department. They had a giant Christmas tree made out of beach balls, I believe, it was awesome.
Alright, here we go, one, two, and, no, I think we have to do it this way, one, two, and, nope, one second, no, camera's dead, there we go, let's try it again, one, two, and, nope, something's wrong guys, sorry.
Alright, sideways, alright, you got it, okay, one more, you wanna do it?
Hopefully it'll work, I don't know, alright, here we go, there we go, I think I got one, alright, I got it.
Our next award is best holiday spirit children, the El Segundo High School Cheer Squad.
Say it loud, say it proud, say it loud, say it proud, Gundo, say it loud, say it proud, say it loud, say it proud, Gundo, say it loud, say it proud, say it loud, say it proud, Gundo.
Wow, you got it tall, man, you got it tall, alright, alright, here we go, one, two, and, one, two, oh. Alright, I really need this to work, let's see here, I think I can get you guys, alright, one more please, alright, thank you very much.
I think they should be at every council meeting and start us off with that cheer. The best holiday spirit adult community civic, and I'm not sure whether they're all here or not, because that could be hard, the John Durka Equestrian Horses. John Durica.
I left the horses behind.
One fella, you brought the horses, that would've been tough, alright, here we go, and one more, alright, thank you sir.
Please love having the horses. The best holiday spirit adult business and commercial, 1-800-GOT-JUNK-YOU-MOVING-HOUSE-WAY-TO-DAY, pyramid time.
I need some blue wigs. Come on, no, no, wow, bummer, okay, here we go, one, two, and, one more, excellent, thank you so much.
The best musical band elementary, the El Segundo Elementary Band.
Alright, here we go guys, one, two, and, one more, thank you so much.
Thanks kids, I was your age when I started playing sax when I still play today, so, gives you something to do on weekends when you get old and have no place to go. And we have, this next group won two awards, so we're gonna name them both, it's the best musical band high school and our Graham Marshall's Award, the El Segundo High School Band and Color Guard. We want to thank everyone and all the participants, we want to thank the city for your support every year of the Holiday Parade and we will see you next December for the 56th Annual Holiday Parade, thank you.
Alright, always a good time, thank you Marcia and Linda, next up we have a presentation on the seating and dining area, otherwise known as a parklet, to be installed in downtown El Segundo and I see Barbara Voss coming to present on this item.
So council, if you recall in last year's budget you did allocate, well, let me go a step further back, in last year's resident survey and in the business survey, we received a number of comments about the condition of downtown and the desire to improve the appearance of downtown and the council did two things, you allocated money in last year's budget for downtown improvements and you authorized a ad hoc task force to be formed led by Barbara Voss made up of members of the downtown community and had them prioritize projects that they wanted to work on and they have completed several projects, here's another one that is coming and Barbara Voss is gonna show it to the council and the public.
Good evening Mayor Boils, members of council, this evening, as Greg mentioned, I'll be presenting briefly our pilot, our first ever downtown parklet, this is coming out of our downtown committee, she'll speak more about in a minute, so, we selected, after a competitive process, we selected an architect, we looked at several designs, we selected an architect called B+U to design our parklet and should start with sort of a definition of what a parklet is, typically a parklet would be in a parking space, it would take up a parking space and it would create a more sort of walkable gathering place in a community to discourage driving and encourage other forms of transportation. We in El Segundo, our downtown committee decided since this is our first one, parking is highly valued in our downtown area, we thought we should look for an alternative to taking up a parking space just for this first parklet, so, we selected a location that is in front of the Chipton Ross 343 Main Street and it's a large landscaped area, it's a wider sidewalk area and instead of redoing the landscaping there which was part of the, one of the initiatives of the downtown committee, we left that without any landscaping so that we could implement this parklet program. Construction scheduled to start on January 22nd and it's estimated to be complete in March or April. So why a parklet, we feel that, or the downtown committee felt that supporting local businesses and increasing economic activity by having more of a place where people would stay and spend some time, a pleasant environment would increase more people to visit the shops and restaurants in our downtown, encourage pedestrian activity, neighborhood interaction, you know, have a cup of coffee, sit with your neighbors, spend some time in our downtown rather than just getting out of your car, getting what you need, getting back in your car and leaving. And then also this, the aesthetics, it improves the appearance of the street, typically street if the park is in a parking place, in our case it's sidewalk. Here are some just other examples of parklets, I have to give some credit to Megan Coverubias, my economic development intern, she did a lot of research on parklet programs as did Paul Samaras in our planning department, on what other cities are doing for parklets and what kinds of parklet programs they have, so these are just some examples of the types of parklets that are out there. So this is the design that the committee selected, we had from this particular architect three very unique designs, including large shade canopies, modern different styles, but ultimately the committee landed on this selection, so you can see it's two angular benches with planters built into it, he had initially recommended a kind of a succulent wall that you'd see like on creation in our downtown area, but we found for maintenance that the actual planter box was a better choice for us, the materials used is Trex, so it's durable, weatherproof. Here's from the actual design submittal, the previous photographs did not show this planting area, if you can see my cursor there, the planting area in from between Main Street and the parklet, we decided to back up the parklet a little bit and put some plants in front to kind of make it more of a garden feel, just give it more color and vibrancy to just make it a more appealing area and we chose drought tolerant succulents and other very beautiful flowering plants that fit in with our overall downtown landscaping selections. Here's more on the materials, again the Trex decking and we still need to decide on some temporary little bistro tables to put out there and maybe some umbrellas for shading. So the overall project construction, B+U, for the design of the parklet was 8,200 and the construction portion is about 23,000 for a total of 31,000. And wanted to acknowledge the downtown committee members, you see there, very active committee, very committed to these projects, very good stewards of the $200,000 budget they were given and this is our second to last installation from that initiative, we will have the downtown lighting, the uplighting coming in the spring and then city staff, I have to give a lot of credit to Cheryl Ebert in Public Works, this is a Public Works project, she's making that happen along with Leifon and of course Ken Berkman and Christopher Henson gave his guidance on the landscaping and what to install there and what he and his crew could maintain and keep looking beautiful for many years to come, thank you.
I just have one comment, so I noticed that there wasn't any shade, were we thinking about putting umbrellas up, is that?
Yes, so, because the shade structures become very complicated with footing and public safety and it was a better option for us to go with something without a built-in shade structure, so yeah, we are thinking of market umbrellas around the little cafe tables, yeah.
I have a question Barbara, from a safety standpoint, hate to think of these things, but given its proximity to the street and a car, I'm thinking back to the Third Street Promenade incident, is there, are there impediments to people being able to drive through and hitting someone? It looked like there was.
So, it is a steel frame structure and it's also set back from the curb and that's part of the reason why we wanted to add that additional planting as more of a buffer, it is a bench on a sidewalk, so it isn't protected by ballards or anything like that, but it is set back appropriately and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did the police look at it at all, I'm just curious.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, looks exciting, so when is this happening, sorry, he probably said.
So, they're gonna construct it offsite and then bring it in and it should be here in March, April at the latest.
Great, look forward to it, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, next up we have a presentation done by Police Chief Wellington, introduce Officer Kaitlin Ross.
Good evening council, it's my honor to come in front of you this evening and introduce to you our newest police officer, Kaitlin Ross, come on up here Kaitlin. Kaitlin represents a few firsts for us, first and foremost, under your leadership last year we instituted a bonus program in an effort to attract the best and brightest to come here to El Segundo and she is our first officer to take advantage of that program, so we're very happy about that and the second thing with Kaitlin is we actually sought her out out of state, now we've talked in this forum many times about going wherever it takes to find the best people to come and serve this community and last year, well actually it was probably about a year ago now, our recruitment team went to Western Oregon University where we found Kaitlin who was studying criminal justice and she graduated last year and we were able to convince her to come take a look at El Segundo and I'm really proud of the recruitment team because when she came down, they spent an entire weekend with her, showed her around the South Bay, showed her why El Segundo is a place that she should consider her law enforcement career and she, as we thought, fell in love with the community and decided to come down here. She graduated the Rio Honda Police Academy last week and I think very significantly she was class president and I bring that up because this isn't an honor that you get by yourself, you don't do it just because you study hard or you shoot well or anything like that, that's an honor bestowed upon you by your classmates and it's an honor bestowed on people who they view to have good leadership, somebody who can carry the class through to the finish line and so we're very, very proud of Kaitlin for receiving that honor. Kaitlin is an outdoor enthusiast, she's not gonna have time right now as she enters the field training program, but up until I think a week prior to the academy she was backpacking in Europe, so I know she's anxious to get back out on that, for the community you'll probably see her around town as of right now she's living in the community, so she's really embracing everything we have to offer, so with that I introduce to you Kaitlin Ross.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, I've never seen a city council meeting, I look forward to serving the community, I've fell in love with El Segundo, living in the area and now working in the area and my goal is to get off training and serve the best I can do, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congrats on being class president. Congrats on the academy and welcome to El Segundo. Let's do a picture, shall we?
Thank you, sir.
It's also important to note while you're walking down that her parents and family are watching live from Oregon right now. So modern of tech, the benefits of technology.
Very good. All right, couple of pictures here. There we go. And once you add one more, and one more. Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Nicol.
Here.
Councilmember Pembentel.
Here.
Councilmember Brand.
Present.
Mayor Protem Prisak.
Here.
Mayor Boils.
Here. Okay, now is the time and place for public communications. As a reminder, anything related to the solid waste item number three, we'll have a separate section for public communications during that item. So if you want to speak, go ahead, approach the mic and state your name and address if
Honorable Mayor Boils, Honorable Mayor Protem Prisak. Hope I did that justice. And our honorable council members, Nicol Pembentel and Dr. Braun. My name is Eric Albertson, 523 West Acacia Avenue. And I came to speak about the new Aquatics Center, the El Segundo Wiseburn Aquatics Center. A couple of years ago, El Segundo stakeholders and officials interviewed and vetted various swim teams for a local aquatics program. The priorities of the city were to find a community-based, affordable, accessible, and to very, accessible to various interests and effective aquatics program through a swim team. Alpha Aquatics won the bid over all other teams that applied based on the priorities that El Segundo presented. El Segundo ensured Alpha priority at the new pool, once it was built at that time. Alpha delivered and exceeded expectations and was so attractive to the community that it built its numbers to somewhere between mid-seventy and mid-eighty, eighties resident swimmers, with about thirty to thirty-five people on the waiting list right now. There's no other team in the area that has even a few swimmers, or more than a few swimmers, that are residents of El Segundo. The pool is built for the El Segundo community, as well as the Wiseburn School District. I cannot stress enough the importance of a community-based aquatics program, one that is accessible, affordable, and local. Personally, and to make that point, I'll share my experience. I started age group swimming through the recreation department at the plunge. It was old then. I played water polo and swam for El Segundo High School. That afforded me the opportunity to go to Division One school, swim and play water polo there. Thank goodness for that because that got me to graduate. And then since then, I've been enjoying a thirty-year career as a professional ocean lifeguard for LA County Fire Department. I don't think that would have been possible without a community-based, community-based swim program. El Segundo Aquatics has a proud history of CIF champions, NCAA athletes, Olympians, junior lifeguards, and dozens, if not hundreds, of seasonal and career ocean lifeguards. Any other swim team in this town would be training the future aquatic athletes for other cities. I'm not saying that shouldn't happen, but I think that the, the team that has prioritized El Segundo and truly represents El Segundo should have the priority at the pool. I've heard the opinion that only one team could train at the pool, at this pool, at a time. That is completely false. This is not a baseball diamond or a ping pong table. It's a pool with twenty lanes. The Culver City Pool has eighteen lanes and has had two and even three teams practice at the same time for years without issue. And they may, that may be happening as we speak. I am asking the city of El Segundo to prioritize its own residents over other cities, provide a community-based aquatics program by the only logical choice, prioritizing lanes for Alpha Aquatics at the new pool, and at the same time, making good on its own promise to provide Alpha with the pool space so that El Segundo Swim Team, Alpha Aquatics, can continue to support the community of El Segundo.
Good evening, Mayor Boils, council members. My name is Philip Schimman. I'm a resident at 834 California Street. I'm also here to talk about the Aquatics Center and the local swim team's bid to move to that, that facility. My two boys have been on the team for three years. At that time, we were La Marada, we were a satellite for the, the swim team that's about forty-five minutes east of here. About two years ago, the team collapsed. With little support from the main, the main campus, we dropped from seventy strong to about twenty, twenty-three swimmers. I was there in the, in the team meeting when the head coach came and said, "We're done. We're walking away from you guys." Now, they brought Beach Cities in, and Beach Cities was, was kind enough to coach for three, three months, while Meredith and the Parks and Rec team, a group, helped us figure out what to do. So they went out to different, different swim teams and brought three teams, three teams into, to interview. They created a selection committee that consisted of parents, I think it was about six of us, I was one of them, Parks and Rec staff, the high school football coach, sort of as an independent viewer of these teams. Beach Cities, Beach Cities made me a little nervous, but I really liked the coach. So I came in going, "Beach Cities is my choice." At the end of that, it was a unanimous decision to go with Alpha. Everybody agreed that that was the team to take over because that was the right fit for our, for our community. It's since grown to about a hundred and fifty swimmers. You heard, we're about seventy strong in terms of El Segundo residents. We have about thirteen Wiseburn swimmers as well. In the plunge, which is where the primary, primary swimmers are, we have over fifty percent are El Segundo residents swimming there. Three of our coaches are El Segundo residents. Actually, that's not true. They're El Segundo natives. They grew up through the system. They swam on, on the high school swim team. They are plunge lifeguards, they were ocean lifeguards, and they are now coaches. Three of them are now coaches here. We even had a lifeguard there at the opening ceremony. One of our Alpha swimmers was a lifeguard at the opening ceremony. This team is embedded in this community. It really is embedded in this community. All, all the swimmers from all levels swim here at, at El Segundo, except for the top, except for the most senior group, and they swim over at LMU. My two boys, my eight-year-old swims about three times a week. He could swim five times a week. My ten-year-old swims four to five times a week. He could swim six. Octavia would like him to swim more. But he does other, other sports. He does AYSO soccer, he does basketball. And as the seasons come and go, we're able to adjust our schedule. I can swim Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I can swim Tuesday, Thursday. And they're very flexible and the coaches have no issues with that. I couldn't do that at Beach Cities. At Beach Cities, there's only one group that swims at one pool, and that's because they only swim one day. All the other groups swim at multiple pools. So you drive to Alondra or to, or to Redondo, depending on what day, and you swim three days a week, and this group swims, swims two days a week at, at these times, and that's it. We don't have the flexibility, and I could not do this. I could not support my kids if I couldn't, if I didn't have this, this local, local pool to be able to take them to. So my understanding is we were, we're ranked number two right now with Beach Cities being number one, and that's primarily a financial decision. Well, they're three times as big as, as big as we are and a much more established program. I can see that they, they can, they can, they have bigger coffers. But I hope this is not a financial decision. I hope this is a decision for the community. I hope this is a decision for the kids. Because we are the, we are the team that will be the feeder. We will take the sharks on. And then, and then our students will become the, the JG at, at Dogweiler. We will become the, the high school swimmers, the high school water polo swimmers. That's, that's the feeder program that, that we can provide. And I was watching the council meeting last month, and Coach Jeff, Jeff Tiddens came up here and thanked you guys for twenty years of support for the inline, inline hockey team. I hope eighteen years from now, one of our guys can come up and say, "Thank you. Thank you for supporting our local team. Thank you for supporting our bid to move over to the new Aquatics Center." Thank you.
Thank you, Philip.
Can anybody get up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you're welcome to, please.
I haven't done this in a long time. I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Monica Davis. I live at fourteen twelve East Maple. Been living there for about fifteen years. The reason my husband and I moved to El Segundo, my dream had always been to live in PV, looked at lots of different houses. But then my husband and I really had a strong talk, and we decided El Segundo was the community for us. We wanted a blue collar town where our kids grow up with great values, firemen, policemen, nurse, next door, family town, Fourth of July, the whole bit. And with that came a swim, swimming facility and hopefully plans for swimming in high school. So my kids are now attending Center Street. I have twins. They are in the fifth grade. They have eight other colleague, classmates just from their grade level. Ten kids, Center Street, fifth grade, are all at the pool right now, swimming with them. This is a small town. This small town has always had to fight for what it needs, for what it gets. We strive in being the best, and we have protected our police, our fire, our community in so many different ways to keep it an independent city. And I think that too belongs to part of the system of the small town Mayberry in LA. And I think that Alpha Aquatics fits that bill. The other swim teams that are vying for that time are very big, very broad, and have different priorities. El Segundo is not their priority. So please consider Alpha Aquatics in your planning for the future and protecting this great town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm a resident of El Segundo at seven one five Maryland Street. And I've come to enjoy many benefits in living here, including a city-funded police and fire department and sitting, sending my three children to the distinguished school district. In the eight years that I've lived here, the cost of living has seemed to grow unchecked. Now, you might be asking yourselves, "How does this affect you or what could you possibly do to help me out?" As the mayor of this fine city, you are a member of the Board of Directors for the County Sanitation Districts of Los Angeles County. The sanitation districts continue, continuously prides itself on providing world-renowned solid waste and wastewater management at some of the lowest costs in the nation. Currently, the sanitation districts charges about half the rate for wastewater treatment when compared to some of the surrounding agencies like the City of Los Angeles and Orange County Sanitation Districts. Because of this excellent service, the citizens of El Segundo benefit from reduced tax rates and assurance that the treated wastewater discharge in local rivers and ocean meet the strict standards of the US EPA and the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. When I was hired at the sanitation districts over sixteen years ago, I was a proud member of such a distinguished agency. However, the morale of this agency has begun to erode due to a disconnect between management and staff. Over the past two years, the professional staff at the sanitation districts have been attempting to negotiate a contract with management with no success. In addition to our cost of living increase, in addition, our cost of living increases for the past two years have been withheld by management, which has caused my family significant hardship. I don't wish to drone over the details of these negotiations, as you, the mayor, have probably been present at numerous board meetings where these discussions have arisen. The reason why I'm here today is to ask you for your help in resolving the impasse. I'm asking you, the next time you attend a sanitation district's board or director meeting, to think of me as well as a hundred other staff members affected by this negotiation and hardships we've experienced over the past two years. Thank you very much for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Could you please state your name?
Nick Small.
Thanks, Nick.
Good evening, Mayor Boils and the rest of the esteemed council. I'm here as a mom and member of the community. My name is Rachel McPherson, and I live at one four two one East Sycamore. I have three fish, I mean kids, who are active swimmers, who are at the pool now. The El Segundo Aquatics Center would really, it would be great if they could host a local team. The Alpha Aquatics has given my nine-year-old and my eleven-year-old an active resident swim team, more importantly, a major outlet for all their youthful, boundless energy. And they've gotten a lot of great guidance, a lot of good coaching, and have made amazing friends. Their confidence levels have skyrocketed, which has increased their participation in school, their ability to connect with people on different levels. It's gotten my older daughter into junior lifeguards. They've made best friends, and we've met people who live just down the street from us who we didn't meet for years. It's really given me friends as well, other swim team moms and dads, and it's been a really great way to meet neighbors and have camaraderie outside of school and work. And my kids are young now, but as they get bigger, I'd really like them to have a local, reliable outlet for all of their energy outside of school, where they can focus and channel their energy in a positive way. They have fantastic coaches, and they have very supportive mom and dad who need somewhere to cheer for them. So please consider Alpha Aquatics for the new pool.
Thank you, Mrs. McPherson. Any other takers for public communication? Sure?
Good afternoon. My name is Coach Octavi Olisi. I was the founder and head coach of Alpha Aquatics. Well, I just want to say really quick, you know, thank you for allowing all our families to come here and, you know, express, you know, their opinions and to, to obviously, you know, request for, for consideration and, 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 you know. Hopefully, hopefully this isn't a financial decision, and you guys can see our case and, you know, see the work we've done in the last two years. I think I stood here on LA December, I think afternoon, it was December twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, I believe, sixteen, and to thank you for allowing us to, to take over the program of twenty-three kids that were, you know, left without a coach, without a team. We came in and in three years, not only we've, you know, raised the number of residents and we've impacted more and more lives as we continue to evolve, but we've also hosted three meets, the El Segundo Plunge, three swim meets with over eighty athletes each, a lot of old residents. And that was the first three meets, US sanction meets that have ever happened at the plunge. I've also been able to add more coaches to the staff, thanks to all the kids that came over. And I've added, you know, I've hired El Segundo staff, I've hired people from the community, which is what I promised to you guys two years ago when we got this. And just like, you know, I promised you guys and we deliver on this, we were hoping that, you know, that the city could see it and also give us an opportunity to continue this project, to continue the partnership in the new pool, you know, and that's it. You know, thank you for your consideration. You know, we love to continue producing talent. We love to have multiple Olympians in many years to come. As of right now, in only two years, we've produced the fastest female swimmer for the El Segundo High School. Her name is Dylan Chan. She was a finalist at the CIF Championships back in May. She was freshman of the year last year. She was MVP last year, and right now, she stands as the fastest freestyler for the El Segundo High team. She's a junior right now. Alpha produce. And then not only that, we have other high school swimmers right now, I believe. Kai Alberto, who's I think is in the room, he's a freshman as well. And just like that, we have five other high school swimmers and many middle school swimmers are continuing, who I know in the next years will be in the high school. So yeah, just thank you for, for allowing all our families to come here and for me to, to speak, and we hope to, that we can continue this partnership in the new pool. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach. With two younger kids that have been through the program, congrats. They were with La Marada, and then they went through Alpha, so great, great stuff, great progress. Thank you. Any other public communications? Okay, that will close public comments. Any city council comments on public communications? Any city council comments on public communications?
Can staff let the public know when decisions are being made?
Right now, we're scheduled to discuss assigning some of the times at the new Aquatics Center at your next meeting, February 5th.
So the choice of who swims in the pool, is that tasked upon us or is that something staff's going to make a recommendation and we either say okay or we change the recommendation?
Staff and the Aquatics Subcommittee will make a recommendation. There are license agreements, so they, they normally come before council for these sort of long-term arrangements and, and council can go with staff recommendation or approve something different.
That's why we get paid the big bucks. I just wanted to make sure everyone at public comment was actually speaking to the people who are going to be making the decision.
Thank you, Councilman Nickel. All right, we are going to move an item up. Madam Clerk, if that's okay with you, we're going to move up item three. Consideration and possible action to direct staff to enter negotiations for an exclusive franchise to EDGO Waste and Rec... Oh, I'm sorry. We got one more thing we're going to move up. Sorry, Ken, false start. Technology Committee, are you represented tonight? Who's here from the tech committee? Oh, great. We're going to do a presentation from the Technology Committee anxiously awaiting. Sorry about that. We're going to move it up so you guys can present and then get out of here earlier. Item six on the agenda? I think we are tracking... Is Charles your...
Yes, he is here. We're, we're, we're tracking him down.
Okay. Not, not item six, actually, item seven. Item seven.
Oh, sorry. But I guess as far as a lead-in, what has it been, two and a half years or two years since council decided to form a technology committee?
At least two.
A little bit more than two years, right? And, you know, the council recognized the need to advance the city's technology, to work with members of the community who have a lot of skill and expertise in this area. And actually, at the time, we didn't even have a IT department. We were still, if you recall, the police department was still, we were still recovering from the recession. The police department was still supervising our, our technology operations. And the tech committee was formed. We've come quite a long ways and I think the purpose of tonight's presentation is to let the council and the public know what, what the tech committee's been able to accomplish in the short period of time that they've been a group and what's in store for the next year. Excellent. All right. Thank you.
Okay, good after, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. I apologize, I was working on a tech issue in the back, so I do apologize. With that, you know, with that said, what I'd like to do is really just highlight some of the additional items that were actually in the staff report. And there are a couple of items that I, you know, probably should have included that I didn't. That staff report should include some of our major accomplishments as a team, number one. So, so what I'll do is I'll just give a couple of items and then we can take turns. Okay? You know, with, one of the most important things that I think that we did as a group was implement what I call Project Management Office and start the use of what I call a project charter, right? And the significance of that actual project charter is that it captures project scope, it captures our business objectives and the associated milestones. And that's very important with basically coming to agreement with the business, with the department, that this is what we're going to do, this is what success looks like, right? So in effect, it's a plan for success. I, you know, want to really underscore how important that was and the fact that we did implement it, had a lot of support from the directors, because it is a lot more work in terms of planning upfront before we actually execute the project. So with that, I think that was a foundational item that allowed us to get as many items, projects completed as we actually did. Okay? In addition to that, the Technology Committee, in conjunction with the directors, staff, they prioritize many of the projects even before I came on board, right? So we really have to acknowledge Technology Committee, old and new, because it was teed up and ready for me to start implementing, implementing projects once we actually came in. And, and that was a very important point. And going forward, obviously, we have a lot of work to do. Excuse me, but, but the work is teed up and we're working together with, with, with the tech committee, working with the supportive city council, obviously, because you guys approved the funding of many of these projects, working with the supportive directors. I'm excited about all of the work that we have in front of us and I think that it, it will be transformative as it relates to how we use technology. Okay? So we have Madeline here as well, so...
Yeah, so I just, my name is Madeline Smith and I am actually the vice chairman of the Technology Committee now. And I joined the group earlier in 2018, so I'm part of the second wave. And the committee was originally formed, I believe, at the end of 2016 and had done a lot of groundwork. So the first thing I wanted to convey is how much we admire and respect and are grateful for all of the work that went into creating this brand-new committee, everything from writing bylaws and organizing meetings and setting up all the structure and getting that all done, which was all before we got there. Now, the current group of people, we have several newer people who are part of this second wave. Some people have now rotated off because of the number of years and the way the timing was. And Chad Han, who's actually our committee chairman, wanted me to convey to council how excited we are about these new projects, taking on the list of projects that had already existed and then moving forward into the future. We had a fantastic strategy session that was toward the mid-end of last year to get input from citizens and other committees and some staff about what the strategic priorities and technology should be. We've put those together, together with Charles. We've lined them up so that we can all kind of dovetail into the city's own strategic plans. And a couple of the council members who come to our meetings know, because we've just been talking about this, we are now increasingly moving toward more and more synergy between these strategic plans that people are, that the city has laid out and that the citizens have laid out and the actual physical projects and work and structure coming out of the technology group. So we're very excited about it. We hope that you guys are very excited about it and we just wanted to say how great we think it's moving now. So that's what I have to say. Jessica, who's our project management group Subcommittee?
Yeah, so I'm Jessica Davis and I started on the tech committee in June or July of this year. And I would have to say, looking at that time until six months now, we actually have made a really good strides. I think we have a really good synergy amongst the committee members and we've been able to put more structure into place to make sure that we're supporting Charles, we're supporting the city and that the voices of the citizens are being heard and that we're being responsible in what we're doing with the technology. And I think we've got a good crossbreed of different people with different niche specialties to bring into the group to make sure that we're doing the best for the city. But, you know, definitely Charles and his team have been phenomenal and very open and open book in having us understand what he's doing, why he's doing, and taking our input into how to tweak and really make a better product out of it.
One last item, I touch on a couple of projects because today was a significant, I think, milestone for one of the projects and that was our permitting system. We received, I believe, six proposals today, RFP. So we're going to get that kicked off and we'll start reviewing those RFP and then at some point in the near future, there'll be a selection that will come to this council for, for approval. Okay? If there's any other questions with respect to staff report, current projects or anything, we're, we're here to support you.
I was just going to congratulate the committee. They've really done an amazing job in the last couple of years. We, we were very behind in our technology when we started, we joined the council and we, Drew and I definitely made it a focus area for us. And since that time, we've instituted the new rec park system. We're in the process of updating our website and we have the whole planning department and there's been, and a host of other projects, like for the plant, for the police and fire. So, I mean, it's very structured and organized and I thank you, you know, the skill sets that you guys bring to the city is amazing and we couldn't have done it without the committee. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just add, Jessica, Madeline, thank you. I know it's a lot of work, especially for a new committee. There's actually a lot of work that goes into this one. It's not just discussion and oversight. It's actually, there are a lot of working groups, so thank you for all the time you're putting into this. And thank you, Charles.
Scott, anything?
No, I bet the under on the meeting ending time, so...
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to throw in one thing for the people watching at home. There are material impacts that come from this work. When business license moves online, when permitting moves online, that is real tangible benefits to both our commercial sector and our citizens when they try to do work with the city. And I don't think that we can fully appreciate on paper what that means to people who are used to trudging here at eight in the morning to get something done before work, when they can suddenly access a city website online. So those efforts are well-realized, even if they're not yet well-appreciated. So thank you.
Great point. And I think we got the new net promoter score. We're just starting to get some preliminary results, second year in a row, consecutive year to the residents and business community. It'll be interesting to see after we've gone to the business license process online if that's reflected in the qualitative comments there. So I'm anxious to get results. All right, we're going to go to item, let's see here. Now we are going to be talking about solid waste. Item three, I will shortly be recusing myself because I own a business in this industry.
Do we need to, do we need to do a procedural motion? Consideration of motion to be read? I don't know. You know, item A.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Nickel. Yeah, item A, consideration of a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Do you have a motion for that?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five oh. Okay, so item three relates to solid waste. I'm going to defer to Mayor Pro Tem Perstik on this and I'll leave the room and be glued to the TV screen in the back.
All right, so item number three, so consideration and possible action to a direct staff to enter into negotiations for exclusive franchise to EDCO Waste and Recycling Services to provide automated residential and municipal solid waste hauling services. Fiscal impact, $7,620,000 over seven years. Mr. Carpenter, who's going to present?
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. You had a very robust discussion of this topic back on December 18th. A number of issues came up, a number of questions were raised and the council ultimately continued the item to tonight's meeting. Ken Berkman, Michelle Leonard will be splitting this, this presentation and we are going to go through the issues that were raised, hopefully answer the questions. Please feel free to ask questions as we go. I think this is fairly lengthy, Ken, probably 25 minutes or so. This is a fairly lengthy presentation, so if we aren't able to answer your questions that you had at the last meeting, please ask them and we will try to answer them. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ken Berkman, our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor Pro Tem, council, it's a pleasure to be in front of you again today. As Greg mentioned, there has been a lot discussed over the past seven months or so and we come to you with, appreciatively, with all the questions you've asked and all the questions that the public has asked of us and hopefully with the length of the presentation, our apologies, but hopefully we cover everything and we're certainly here to answer any questions. So to start with, for an overview of what we're going to talk about, our background and history, what did we do for the RFP, its process and the results of that, we're going to take a look at automated and manual collection services, talk about CalRecycle compliance programs and the city's issues therein, and finally, how we came up with the recommendation for the automated services with EDCO. So let's go back to seven years or so, September 20th, 2011, where the council awarded a seven year contract to, at that time, Consolidated Disposal or Republic. The renewal, a little bit of history, in 1993, a company Zacharoff was providing the services and they merged with Republic in 1998. So in 2011, that basically threw an RFP process. The committee that was formed looked at all four proposals that came in and determined they were all exceptional. And that was, that was a quote from the report. So to save the city money, about a million dollars over the seven-year contract, they did award it to, recommend award and council moved that for Republic. At that time, the five and six unit properties were deemed no longer residential and went into commercial service area. So in June 19th of last year, we started with a study session on our overall solid waste program. And we noted that we were one of three cities in LA County that pays for residential solid waste collection services, the other ones being San Diego and Commerce. We noted, we're the only city within, in LA County with unlimited curbside manual service. The asterisks on that, that I mentioned in the report, there is a city in the peninsula that does have manual service, but it is a, what's known as a valet service, where the workers go onto the property, bring the trash cans to the truck and bring them back. So as part of the initial efforts where staff was looking at the expiration, upcoming expiration of Republic's contract and talking with the environmental committee, we thought we would do an owner opinion survey. Basically, kind of a raw emotion, gut check of where folks thought, what folks thought about automation, there's the manual service, paying for trash, things like that. So at the time, there was no information really given on the automated system, it was just, what are people thinking? So we had about 3,100 go out, we had 1,300 responses. They went out both by US mail and when folks signed up, that the preferred method was via email, that's how we sent them. And that was back in November 2017 and there were a couple of things that we found out. Folks were happy with Republic at an average rating out of 10 of 8.75. And that 62% indicated a preference for the current manual service. And continuing on with the, with the program, we started an introduction to what's going on with CalRecycle, what's going on with the state and our city. So local staff conducted a four-year audit, typical four-year audit, 2012 to 2015, where they looked at our program and said there are gaps in our program, there are issues in our, our solid waste program. They referred us to what's known as the Jurisdictional Compliance Unit or JCU, and that's your March 22nd, 2017 letter in the packet. So what's happened since then is JCU staff have actually conducted a one-year, basically audit of all our programs, research and including field reviews, looking actually at, at residence roll trash and its contents and, and producing findings based on what they found. And what they found was a verification basically of the local staff's assessment and they recommended a compliance order to be issued to their board, to the CalRecycle Board, and that letter is in your packet November 15th. And as recent as the day before our last meeting, December 17th, we were before the board, Michelle Leonard and Senior Management Analyst Jasmine Allen were there, and the board did approve the JCU's recommendation to put us into a compliance order. So what does that mean? This is kind of late-breaking news. Since then, Michelle and Jasmine and I have been working on what is our, what's known as a local implementation plan. What are we going to do? So we have to produce that and we produced a schedule for them and that's supposed to start, that being our actual measures we're going to implement to address their gaps, July 1st of this year. The schedule is slated for about a year that we have time as a schedule for us to get back into compliance with their programs. That hasn't been completely approved yet, but we're awaiting that notice shortly. So non-compliance for city agencies or agencies that are responsible for solid waste programs can result in fines of up to $10,000 per day, once all this has happened and you continue to be non-compliant after the date that you're due to be compliant. Oh, sorry. The key statewide regulation that's upcoming is Senate Bill 1383, which is regard to organics and enforcement for that comes in 2022. It's very specific rules and regulation that we must follow up to and including generators of waste, which is individual properties. Michelle will be talking about all the rules and regulations in more detail later in the presentation. And at the end of the June meeting, council directed staff to prepare and request for And at the, uh, end of the uh, June meeting, council directed staff to uh, prepare and request four proposals and start a Prop 218 process to assess uh, $20 per month charge. So going to July 17th meeting, we did uh, bring forward a draft RFP and included automated and manual services. We brought a draft Prop 218 ballot and public hearing notice as legally required. We approved a six-month extension, looking at the October 31st, 2018 um, contract end for Republic. And they proposed a uh, $16.55 per month, per unit cost for those six months, which council approved, um, and that was an increase from the rate of $9.88. The other key item that was approved, uh, similar to previously with the five and six units, is that the three and four unit dwellings were no longer to be considered residential and thus would be moving into commercial service. September 4th, the RFP and the Prop 218 documents were approved for distribution. November 6th, we had the public hearing for the Prop 218 process where there was not a majority protest, so council has the um, authority to levy that fee. And that was upon the, the single-family and duplex properties. And as we know, the last meeting at the 18th, uh, December, staff recommended after the process of the RFP, EDCO, uh, for the next seven-year contract. So we'll go through the RFP process and results. We advertise in trade publications and websites. For some months, five haulers attended our mandatory pre-proposal meeting. Four haulers submitted proposals that were reviewed by myself, the Finance Director, our Public Works General Service Manager and Senior Management Analyst, and uh, SCS Engineers, Ms. Cheryl Leonard. Um, and we evaluated that based on 33 specific questions, uh, tailored to the um, RFP and the scope of services required. The uh, rankings after the proposals, um, were EDCO and then Waste Management, and then Republic, um, followed um, far, pretty far behind by a fourth proposer, so we invited the top, those top three to commence, uh, to continue to the interview process. So that phase was conducted by the same panel. We added um, City Manager Carpenter, who's a resident, to that mix. And in the end, the rankings uh, remained the same, and, and EDCO was unanimously recommended as uh, one um, panel member after it, the interview process ranked EDCO uh, first. So a couple of notes about the proposals. Uh, the EDCO automated services over manual would save the city about $1.35 million dollars over the course of the contract. And when comparing the low bid automated of EDCO against the, uh, the third-ranked uh, manual bid of Republic, over the course of the contract, the city could save $940,000. So two brief, uh, hopefully briefly slides on our um, scope of services that were in the RFP. The manual bid services was basically everything that we are doing now, with the exception of um, we eliminated in both cases, manual and auto, the weekly unlimited bulky items, and uh, made those bids four times per year and six items per pickup for folks. So we have the weekly unlimited waste, where the residents provide the containers, the weekly unlimited recyclables, where now Republic provides the, um, the containers, our green waste at the uh, drop-off at the city yard, our two cleanup weeks, our two annual shredding events, holiday tree collection after Christmas, abandoned collection in the, uh, item collection in the right-of-way, city sponsored events, um, at five were, were the bid base, and outreach, um, and really education is kind of part of helping out with CalRecycle's requirements. The automated, the exact same services, but we no longer have the unlimited trash, but we have a three-cart system, trash recycle and green, or, or in the future, taking the organics or food waste. Uh, we selected the 95-gallon carts as our base bid, and um, the key difference from the previous slide for this is um, knowing the Prop 218 process uh, could go forward, uh, residents were offered the lifeline rates, like our water services if you meet a certain income threshold. So a bit about the collection systems for manual collections. We mentioned we're the only city with the manual unlimited collections. Uh, we have no green waste collection program, which was a specific issue with CalRecycle. The manual collections would not be compliant with the upcoming Senate Bill 1383 that requires containers with lids and specific colors and labels. Um, the manual collections are susceptible to animal attractions, let's say, and without the lids and containment, um, they could be an issue for stormwater pollution, or what's known as our, our NPDS permit, our stormwater permit with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. With um, automated collections, it would facilitate compliance with CalRecycle's current and future programs, uh, encourages individual reduction of the, of the waste stream, and does provide an easy transition from unlimited services, um, specifically with EDCO offering one additional trash cart and three additional recycle carts and three additional green waste carts at no charge, um, upon request. After mentioned, reduce, we, we, we would reduce vector and stormwater pollution potential with our closed covered containers. Um, they are safer, more effective and efficient. Well, well, how? One is that drivers don't have to get in and out of the trucks to, in the street to get the cans. Um, and the fact of the matter is pretty much like any other industry, in talking with um, haulers, you know, insurance or disability or, or lost work time is an issue with manual collections and, and lifting the, the cans in and out. From safety perspective, the, the trucks have the, the cameras to see around the entire truck. And for efficiency, uh, one thing EDCO provided from the very beginning in their proposal and talked about in their interview was uh, they visited the city and, and through their GIS routing system noted, we can do a, a four-day collection and eliminate the Friday service. So um, how does it work? When we talk about automated collections, we haven't done it. A lot of folks are, so, so what do we do? Well, the 95-gallon were our, uh, part of our base bid, the three-cart system. And um, they do come with, with wheels and lids. And uh, it could be noted that the typical 32-gallon cans that we use for our trash, uh, three of those can pretty much fit into one 95-gallon cart. EDCO uh, is offering 62 or 32-gallon, the smaller sizes, instead of the 95s at, at no charge, which uh, will certainly help some folks if needed. And as part of the outreach and education process and, and service transition, they will pick up any cans that folks would like to get rid of upon receipt of the uh, cart system. One of the things that we've, we've heard, um, that may be issues for, for folks are we have, El Segundo has narrower streets. We have trash in alleyways, trash pickup in alleyways, I'm sorry, and um, you know, trees that could cause, have some limb interference. Well, the, tho- those issues are not unique to El Segundo, and they are in, in many cities. The automated trucks are the same size as the manual trucks. And um, you know, Public Works is, is very proactively always working with the Parks Department to make sure our trees are trimmed properly and, and provide proper clearance in our roadways, uh, not just for trash trucks, per, per all, if we envision all the delivery trucks that travel around our town. So carts are typically, they're, they're placed in the street or the parkway, the parkway being the, the area between the curb and the sidewalk. I say that noting that the um, the entire street really would need, the entire parkway on a, on a block, let's say, would need to be concrete, because if you put them, uh, people just don't want to put them on grass or if they have landscaping, so that's basically why we put it in there. It is possible, and some cities have that. It does occupy, the carts do occupy curb or driveway area until the carts are removed upon collection. Vehicles are typically parked on the street with the carts on collection days. Um, the option is vehicles can park in their, in, in the driveways and put the carts at the curb or in front of the driveway and, and move them if, if someone needs to leave the residence. Carts can be stored in the same area as the area folks put their, their manual cans. And again, kind of going back to the math of typically the three average manual can size that we can kind of get at Home Depot can fit in one cart of 95 uh, gallon capacity. And definitely one of the things we heard from the very beginning, which is why it made its way into the RFP itself, and all the haulers, uh, proposers had to address it, current Republic drivers would be offered employment if uh, another company was, was chosen. And um, with the street sweeping, that's another thing that is, um, excuse me, it's another thing that we have to analyze and, and take a look um, and optimize. It's been a long time, probably, I think, since we've done that, and with a new hauler coming in, and looking at our routes, we, it's, it's pretty typical for a hauler to get with a street sweeper vendor and look at everything together holistically, so we can put forth the best plan, which would all be part of the public outreach process. So we'll take a look at um, a few examples of, of manual collections and automated collections. This is a, a couple of, we, we know there's many um, different styles, let's say, of putting out our trash. Anything from, from the left, which is a little more boxed up, and those carts are actually, uh, those both have wheels on them. And then the other side is um, just, just putting them out, so it's just a couple of examples. An example of our manual collection in uh, alleyway, noting where the the cans are, both in the alley itself or set back toward the garage. And looking at um, some examples of automated collections that we found at our, at our neighbors. This is an example of a collection that is conducted on Wednesday, and those signs are no parking for two hours on Thursday. Excuse me. Sorry. An example, there, the carts are there with parked cars, and those carts, kind of hard to see in here, but they're at the curb, and they're also in front of the driveway itself. Another example with, with obviously a bit larger lots, but the carts are in front of the curb and a little bit in front of the driveway. The ones on the, the right of the photo are in the curb between the two driveways with a, a car parked in the driveway and a car parked um, on the, the far side of the driveway. I can't say for sure if those are 95 gallons, a question from the audience, but um, they seem like it. Yeah. So hopefully this works. Uh, unlike the drone video, but I tested it, so let's see. Picture's worth a thousand words, a video certainly can be worth a lot more, so let's uh, let's take a look at how automation works. Uh, thank you, thank you, Greg. So what we're gonna look at, um, EDCO uh, produced the video, because I wanted to get out in front of everybody, the council and the public, to uh, really see what this looks like in action. There'll be um, some pictures and uh, or video of the manual collections that exist in our city, and then automated services that they are providing in other cities. Okay, so thank you for your attention to that. Um, next part of our presentation regarding the CalRecycle compliance. Um, and after which, uh, after this slide, Michelle Leonard will get up and, and really speak to some details of rules and regulations of the state and uh, compliance issues. So um, as you know, our, our local assistants came by and, and, or reviewed our program for the four years. Um, in March 2017, there were certain issues they pointed out through November 2018, where the JCU um, provided their input uh, to the board. So at first, they, they mentioned our mandatory commercial recycling, which JCU continued um, for our compliance needs for commercial diversion program. The residential green waste program that local assistants cited, um, became the green waste diversion program for the JCU. Uh, the local staff cited our construction and demolition debris recycling program, which is uh, crossed out. Kudos to Sam Lee and uh, his building official and team, Lucas Koch, to uh, demonstrate compliance to CalRecycle on that program. And the JCU came back and replaced that with special collection seasonal events, and we gotta, gotta dive in to see what that's about. And in both cases, they cited edu- education outreach and um, our overall program monitoring. And ultimately, uh, as we said, December 17th, the JCU recommended issuance of a compliance order against the city uh, to the CalRecycle Board that they approved. So, Michelle?
Good evening. Thank you, Ken, and uh, it's good to be back here in front of the uh, city council. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the uh, legislation and the regulations that the city is responsible to comply with. Um, and I'll summarize them and try to make them as brief as possible. Uh, the big one up there is AB 939. You know, that was uh, passed in 1990. It was the first time cities and counties in California had to write a solid waste plan. They had to say what they were gonna do, you know, with their solid waste, um, moving forward, uh, and it set that 50% diversion rate. We've gone um, although we, uh, that uh, 50% was 2000, AB 939 still lives on, and we are still required to comply with it. And in fact, that's uh, a part of the subject of the compliance order. Um, and then uh, between 2012 and 2016, there was more solid waste uh, laws passed, I think in uh, the last 20 years before. Uh, AB 341 is a mandatory commercial recycling, and that's that all businesses that have at least four cubic yards per week of trash have to have the opportunity to uh, recycle. Uh, and the city is required to monitor and identify businesses that are in compliance and, and those uh, that are not uh, working in uh, close um, concert with the, the haulers. Uh, and then a few years later, AB 1826, uh, so that took it one step further for the- So that took it one step further for the commercial businesses and it was phased in, but you can see 2019 where we are today, all, again, all businesses with four cubic yards per week of trash. And that's basically, you know, the dumpster that you see in the back of most businesses. They have to recycle their organics. So again, the services have to be provided and made available to the businesses. The onus is really on the businesses to implement those programs. The city's requirements are to report and monitor compliance and report back to CalRecycle, educate the businesses on what the requirements are and hopefully help them to comply. So then SB 1383, and a lot of people say that this is the new AB 939. I think it's the AB 939 on steroids. This is the law that implements the short-lived climate pollutants. It's really, its emphasis or objective is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the state of California. So it, as a result of that, it affects the residential and commercial generators. Remember the other 341 and 1826 were just on our commercial businesses. This one actually says the residents are also going to have to recycle not only their green waste, but food waste. And you can see the goals that have been established for that, 50% by 2020 and 75% by 2025. We're also going to recover edible food and that involves donating and agencies that help to feed people that are, don't have food. Part of SB 1383 says that residents and commercial businesses must be provided with organics collection services. And the city is required to conduct, again, education and outreach to let the residents and businesses know what the law is and make sure they are doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's a big change, huge change in behavior for all of us. And the other part of this law is to, the city has to conduct contamination monitoring. So the concern being that because we haven't done this before, residents and businesses may have some challenges to get the right materials in the right bin. So we're going to be looking in the recycling bin to make sure it's just recycled. We're going to be looking in the trash bin to make sure there's just trash in there. And we're going to be looking in the organics bins, making sure that it just contains organics. The city has to report annually to the Waste Board or to the CalRecycle and oversee compliance of the generators as well as the haulers. So when does this start? In 2022. You probably saw earlier, it said we were supposed to reach that goal by 2020. There's a little disconnect there, but city need to, the cities need to implement the programs beginning in 2022. Recognizing this is a big change, the CalRecycle and staff gave a little extra time for cities and counties to comply with the new requirements. The hammer on SB 1383, similar to AB 939, is that penalties can be assessed both on residents and on businesses as well as on haulers. And there is a huge list of various fines based on various schedules and requirements, too long to go into today, but suffice it to say that there are graduating levels of fines if the residents and businesses are not participating. And if we aren't in compliance, then corrective action plans may be imposed to make sure that the city is in compliance with various timelines and milestones. So as Ken shared with you, the city is presently under a compliance order. Jasmine Allen and I went up to the meeting with CalRecycle in mid-December and the recommendation by staff was to issue the compliance order. The reasons that the city was issued a compliance order were that the city did not make a good faith effort and failed to adequately implement programs to achieve the diversion requirements. And so although the city met its disposal requirement, the quantitative disposal requirement, the city was found to not have made a good faith effort, which is, they define as reasonable and feasible efforts to implement programs. So the concern is that there, and one of the reasons why the city was issued the compliance order was that there were high amounts of green waste in the waste bins. The CalRecycle staff didn't find a whole lot of green waste in the drop-off at the city yard and really determined that the green waste program was not effective. I wanted to point you to the chart on the right, which was some calculations that I did using annual reports that the city obtains from the hauler. And you can see just on the residential side what the diversion rate is. Now remember, we're supposed to be at 50% diversion under AB 939 and the residential obviously is falling short of that. So what is the future? With SB 1383, it's very prescriptive and the legislation, the regulations are about 98 pages long. I sleep with it, I carry it with me wherever I go, and I still don't know all of it, but we do know that manual containers will not comply with SB 1383. The prescriptive requirements say the city shall provide containers, various colors, blue for recycling, black or gray for trash and green for the organics. They should have lids, et cetera. The manual unlimited waste collection isn't going to provide that incentive to divert those materials. We know that, as I showed you on the previous slide, the residential diversion rate is pretty low. I would offer that because we have the manual unlimited trash collection, a lot of the material is going into the disposal and material that the green waste is not getting into, the green waste drop-off and the residents are disposing of a lot. It doesn't incentivize people to recycle or to recycle their green waste. The SB 1383 does allow for residents to be fined. Again, those are individual residents could be fined for not complying with the law.
Thank you, Michelle. Five more slides. So our schedule, what are we looking at now? With authorization tonight, we expect to execute an agreement via council next month and look at public outreach and education in March and April. I probably should mention specifically with Edco, one of their differentiators and why I would expect we'd be able to execute our agreement, bring it to you next month. They had no exclusions or red lines or any comments on our franchise agreement. They're ready to sign it and the other haulers had significant comments on those. So we think we can have no problem with our negotiations and bring it back to you. So public outreach and education course includes an initial direct mailing. Edco developed a website specific for El Segundo. We're going to go around and have at least six public workshops, I'm sure more as needed. Come to council meetings, our service organizations throughout town, community events, we'll be out there getting all the information that we can to folks. We'll have the carts, various sizes on display here at City Hall, the library, rec park, wherever we can put them where a lot of folks will see them. Continuing on, Edco would look to hire and train the drivers, send the change of service day if needed, based on our routing. A second direct mailer would be provided, routes would then be posted online, you know, more towards April. And May 1st, we would look to commence the services. After that, a third direct mailer would be provided. Edco is going to prepare a quarterly newsletter. The first one would go out with all the information, public outreach and education. And as part of the process, when folks start using the carts, they can kind of figure out what size and number are best for them and they can exchange those carts for free during the process. And again, ongoing, Edco has proposed a very robust public education and outreach program, which will certainly help us comply with CalRecycle's gaps that they've cited. So what happens with the three and four unit properties that are now no longer part of the residential contract? The, the one thing I wanted to make sure that everybody understood, we do want to correct the number of threes and fours in the staff report. And long story short, through the history of staff reports, there were definitely some different numbers of eligible addresses and parcels and we use that. And compared to the audit that we did as part of our Prop 218 process, which very specifically determined what the single family and duplex properties are, and doing that math was a little different, but the actual numbers that we're looking at based on a, using today's numbers, just today, that the county assessor provides us on a quarterly basis, that we have 89 triplexes for a total of 267 units. And then 127 quadruplexes, if we want to call them that, the four units, for a total of 508 units. In the staff report, I think it was 85 triplexes and 104 four units. For example, back in 2011, I think the number was the same at 85, but it was 111 four units. So we know based on today and our data that we have, this is what we're looking at for a total of 775 total units. So what are the options possibly? Well, like typical commercial customers, they can, owners can look at what services would best fit their property and contact permitted haulers, you know, city staff would certainly, you know, be sending out letters in coordination with the hauler to say, you're no longer part of the residential contract. Here are your options, here are the folks, the haulers you can contact that do work in our city and figure out what they'd like to do and what they will pay for. One thing to consider is possibly, as part of a direct direction to staff tonight, is we could bring those properties into the franchise agreement for the selected hauler. And the same process could occur where they talk with the hauler, look at their property, see the logistics, see the amount of waste they think they'll produce and select their services and then the hauler would directly bill those folks. It would be, right, it would be optional. They, the threes and fours, property owners would not have to go with the selected hauler, but it would be basically maybe in the, it could be put into the eligible address list or some other form, but we can figure out, sure.
Do they become part of that $20 cap? Or if the bill is $29 a month, they're paying $29 a month?
They would pay whatever the services cost directly to the hauler.
If you're asking us to include them in the franchise, that we're not now incurring an additional $9 per unit potentially?
That's true. There would be no additional cost to the city. This would be a property owner of the three and four unit owner costs. Thank you. So the panel put a, you know, a lot of effort, a lot of time and effort, both to work with you, to put the RFP together, to analyze the proposals, to do the interviews. And, you know, it's definitely a big decision and we understand the ramifications and I want to make sure we get it, we get it right. So even myself, just like I do with any of our RFPs for major projects, down to our individual capital projects, we always call references. So before I get to that, you know, Edco gives us clarity, kind of, we were talking about it in the negotiations and for future compliance, they didn't take any exceptions to our agreement. They didn't note any exceptions about current or upcoming compliance issues. They were the only hauler to even note that we were in the JCU process. And so they understand where we're at with CalRecycle. They provide the apples and apples transition experience that we need here, going from unlimited manual into automated carts. Very important, they're the only ones that had the combined property owner and city billing experience with the city of Coronado since 1993. They've gone through proactively and taken a look at what could possibly be our hauling routes and eliminated one day, the Friday, so four days per recollections. From an environmental standpoint, they're offering, bringing near zero emission renewable natural gas trucks into our city, which will comply in certain air quality regulations that are, that are coming in a couple of years and then around 2030, I believe it is. And very, very poignant customer service compliments for us, text messaging for folks to provide, say, any issues. The personalized city website for us that I mentioned, and they also noted any lost or damaged carts would be exchanged or replaced at no cost. And on top of all that, when considering the cost for automated, they are the greatest value with a seven-year contract, they had the lowest cost. So I mentioned the calls I made to the reference cities and I wanted to just briefly tell you exactly what folks said when I said, how do you, how do you like them? How's Edco been? Rancho Palos Verdes, who had twice weekly manual unlimited trash and went to automated. Their senior analyst said they've been great, they've been super accommodating. And for us, a point of, they hired former hauler staff. La Marada for a transition to another hauler, great customer service, they've gone above and beyond for us. Lakewood, which went through a transition from manual to automated. The public works director there said she wholeheartedly and unreservedly recommends Edco. She can't say enough good stuff. And this is an interesting one. The residents know their drivers and love this so much that they come to council meetings and say so. And Coronado, probably our most applicable example for us, the free unlimited manual to automated and combined billing of the owners and the city. They've been superb, extraordinary responsiveness and no billing issues. So I appreciate your time and attention. Our final thoughts, hopefully we've gone through enough, well, not enough, hopefully we provided all the details to show that we must go to automated to demonstrate to CalRecycle that we're being responsive to their current compliance order and comply with SB 1383 in the future. And that Edco is the highest ranked hauler that has the exact experience we need to transition from our free unlimited residential trash collection services to a CalRecycle compliant cart services with combined city property owner billing at the lowest overall contract cost. And that's the basis of our recommendation. So we appreciate your time and we all remain to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ken. Yeah, so at this time, we're going to have public comments. So anyone who's interested in speaking on behalf of this item, please do so now, limited five minutes per person.
Hello, good evening, honorable mayor in the lobby, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members and everyone watching here or at home. My name is Tracy Miller-Zarnecki. I'm a 21-year resident of El Segundo and currently serving as the Chair of the City's Environmental Committee. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the committee, all of which are actually seated in the room. Hi guys, girls, everybody. We have participated in and listened to countless conversations on this topic since it was first presented by Ken last June. And for our meeting last Friday, we decided to publicly voice our advice to council as we unanimously voted to restate our recommendation of choosing the automated option of waste hauling. There are many reasons why switching to automation is a good environmental choice. A lot of them you saw in this presentation, but because sometimes things don't sink in unless you hear it a couple of times, I'm going to reiterate them from the environmental lens now. The proposed waste hauling services with automated service are more greenhouse gas friendly with near zero NOx emission, renewable gas emissions, putting out far less pollutants than the manual waste hauling vehicles that we currently have in our city. And they are already compliant with upcoming state NOx and petroleum reduction goals. The automated process is more efficient, which means less time for hauling vehicles to to create traffic congestion and even what little greenhouse pollution they do generate in our town. The plausible concept of having trucks on our streets only four days a week instead of five is right there, roughly a twenty percent reduction. That's basic math. We will have more contained and better sorted waste with the system, using the vendor-issued attached lid bins, varying sizes. We have the benefit of less blowaway trash during storage time and collection time. The lids keep the waste contained until the proper angle of emptying into the truck. So we shouldn't see it blowing down the street like open containers that sit out on windy collection days and during the standard hauler dumping process as we see now. On a related note, we will increase our compliance on the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. In other words, we currently do not take efforts to prevent pollution from falling into our waste receptacle, from our waste receptacles into the sewer systems. And this not only flows out to the ocean, but also dirties our streets, our alleys, and our yards on the way. A lidded bin system means less attraction for varmints from possums to raccoons to birds. I can't tell you how many times I have watched crows perched on unlidded containers rip open bags and start scavenging and dropping rotting food all over our streets. I also can't tell you how many of those chicken bones that are dropped my dogs try to eat as we're walking through the streets. So to have none of that happening would be amazing. With the new bin system, we will be compliant with the state regulations for organic waste as you saw. And honestly, we've been talking about that for over four years now. That was one of the questions I asked the seated council when I was put on this committee. How do we not have green waste at our curbside? This is incredible in this day and age. Anyway, it'd be nice to get on board with that and also avoid the threat of the ten-thousand-dollar per day fines that are coming. Taking off my green hat for a moment to speak as a resident, I just want to express how frustrating it is to watch council require an RFP process and then completely disregard that direction. It's such a waste of city staff time and effort, which essentially means wasted money. It's also a huge waste of council time in further deliberating and delaying a vote after being presented with thoughtful, factual, rubric-based evaluation that presented a clear first-place option over a month ago. Nonetheless, that's where we are. Those who keep coming back to the survey results that people want manual need to recognize that the survey was in no way scientific, balanced, or based on an educated foundation, but rather pure emotion and institutional comfort. In fact, if during the survey respondents had been told that manual waste hauling would cost the city at least another nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for a contract, I imagine they would have taken a moment to realize what else that could buy with our limited general funds and/or the resident fee contributions that will lessen the subsidy provided by the general fund going forward. These will be things that all residents can appreciate, not just the minority of residents who would continue to benefit from the partially subsidized waste hauling services, who wouldn't rather see upkeep of public safety or parks facilities instead of worrying about how their waste is carted away. On the flip side, recent conversations make me glad to see that residents are coming to understand what the reality of dealing with trash is in today's world. And as I've said before, but it bears repeating here, change can be hard, but it is inevitable. And I hope we can all move forward together with educated, thoughtful progress on this topic, not hindering our city with the we've always done it that way approach based on nostalgia, fear of change, and denial of reality. Woo, three seconds. Thank you for listening. And please consider this recommendation for automation on six city-appointed and educated votes for future thinking and protection of our city and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Good evening, Council. Bob Turnbull, twelve oh seven East Acacia. This is the last thing I, as a police captain, former police captain here, I thought I'd be speaking on in front of you. But I can only echo what she just said, the prior speaker. I've lived in the city twenty-two years. When I, in nineteen ninety, I was paying for trash in the city of Hawthorne to waste management. When I came here and observed the entitlement of the residents for trash collection, it was appalling. And the sad part is, is I watched council members over the last twenty-nine years toss this political hot potato. Two years, every two years. The only person here that would know is Mark Hensley, but it came up all the time and people were afraid to make the right decision. All I'm saying, stop kicking the can. You're a council that talks about not kicking the can. This is something that has been for the past fifteen years. People afraid to make the right decision to move to a trash management system that's best for our city. It's never good to be the only person doing something unless you're Amazon or, you know, I wish I was Amazon Prime. But we're the only city pretty much doing this. We're still the only city that don't collect utility user tax from our residents. These are failures on the part of our leaders of the city out of fear of not being reelected. I've watched it for too many years and I just challenge you to step up, do the right thing, and help us have a better trash management system.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, esteemed council. My name is Still Rachel McPherson at one four two one East Sycamore Avenue. I wanted to say that first, as a resident, I whole and on the environmental committee, I just wanted to second everything that Tracy Miller-Zarnicki eloquently stated. I also wanted to say that professionally, every day, I implement all forms of NPDS permits. I walk around all kinds of businesses from three-hundred-acre facilities to tiny mom-and-pop-owned restaurants, and I ensure that they are compliant with NPDS permit regulations. So as a resident and a professional stormwater permit implementer, it pains me to come home and not be compliant with NPDS permits in my own hometown. I also wanted to say that as a just somebody who's trash-aware, when I go to the beach with my family, we have a rule that before we leave, we pick up our stuff and we also each pick up ten pieces of trash. I cannot tell you how many times we have to implement that rule on our own street after trash pickup because there's so much litter on the street in the way we haul trash now. I just wanted to emphasize that the costs of not doing automated are just too compelling to vote otherwise. The cost to our air quality, the cost to our staff time, the loss of staff time and their thoughtful review, the cost of not having green waste recycling, the cost of city resources, other city resources that would come out of the general fund for not using the most cost-effective method of trash hauling, the cost of litter and bacteria that currently enters our storm drain system and ends up on our local beaches when we don't have lids on our trash cans and when we have a lot of blown-away trash from hauling currently. So please make the fiscally and the environmentally responsible choice and vote for automated trash hauling. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, and Mayor Boyle, wherever you are. My name is Kevin McGee. I'm on the environmental committee and would like to second the comments made by Tracy. And as a resident on California Street, I would like to urge the council to approve staff proposal and move forward with the contract with Edco for a number of reasons. First, it gets us into compliance with state laws. It's the cleanest option. It's the highest-ranked proposal, and it saves almost a million dollars for getting us into compliance. That should be the the price of entry here. And we should, I'm a little surprised that staff even accepted a bid and reviewed the bid and interviewed a company that didn't would not bring us into compliance. We're in this situation because we're out of compliance. And I didn't realize, but we're out of compliance with AB nine thirty-nine, which was adopted in nineteen ninety. And the requirements to meet it were in two thousand, it's two thousand and nineteen now. So this is thirty years coming, we're still not in compliance. And I was pretty shocked when I saw that the division rate for residential was twelve percent when it's supposed to be fifty percent. So we're really behind the ball here. Second is it is the cleanest option, as Tracy mentioned, having uncovered trash cans, least dirt in the street. And I don't know about you guys, when I was looking at the pictures, the one I drove down the street, seeing kind of a mishmash of trash cans, some open, see dogs and cats and raccoons going through them. It's a nice word to me, having something nice and consistent that keeps the the waste from going onto the streets would be would be my would be my preference. Next is the highest-ranked proposal. Staff went through a robust RFP process and you should respect that process and the decision that they've made. And if you're looking at automatic versus manual options, the manual option was third. Not only does it not get us into compliance with state laws, it was third. So if you're going to not take Edco, move to the second one. It makes the most sense. But you still should go with Edco because it was a unanimous number one by all the the rankers. And lastly, it saves a million dollars a year and that's that's a lot of money. You could do a lot with a million dollars. You could upgrade facilities, upgrade parks, you could upgrade some of our some of the equipment. You could do a lot with it. It won't cover all of our future needs financially, but it's a right step forward. And I know some of you may reference the survey that was conducted a couple of years ago. But that survey, as Tracy mentioned, that survey didn't include the one-million-dollar price tag. When I filled out the survey, I said I was for manual, I was for the status quo, not knowing that million-dollar price tag. But knowing that, I changed my mind. And even if you, so that that survey should be thrown out. It's invalid because it didn't have all the information. Even if you choose not to to throw out that survey, I mean, if you think that's the popular opinion, it very well may still be, but it's not what's best for the city. If you ask people, if if the City of El Segundo should give each citizen a hundred dollars at the end of the year, everyone's going to say yes. It's not the best thing for the city. People would give their opinion what's individually best to them. But you guys are elected officials, you guys are supposed to be the leaders of this city, and you guys should be able to go against what you think is a popular opinion and do the right thing. And that the right thing is saving is getting into compliance, choosing clean as an option, following staff's proposal, and saving almost a million dollars. So I urge you guys to approve staff proposals to move forward with the contract with Edco. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council, Mayor Boils, wherever you are, seems to be the common theme, right? Thank you for the presentation tonight. I noticed there's less than two hundred views on the video. Our house was one of them, so thank you for putting that up. My name is Vincent Zupo. I've been a resident of El Segundo since two thousand and fourteen. My wife and I moved here, got our first townhouse together. We now live at three twenty-four Whiting Street. I normally, when people ask me what time it is, I tell you how the watch is made, so I need to read off a piece of paper to keep my thoughts together. But I want to share some thoughts, comments as a concerned resident and voter of this community. I understand members of this council may feel they were elected to represent, you know, those who voted for them and what they want. I know when I place my vote, I'm doing so because I'm selecting a candidate who's most aligned with how I view certain topics that are important to me and my family. Understanding that we're not necessarily going to agree on everything. For those topics that we don't agree on, I trust that whoever I vote for will do what's right for the community and for the city as a whole. Now, I would say I don't envy your position. I think it's a tough role. I wouldn't want to do it, so I commend you for being up here. But I do think it's important to distinguish between the things that we want and the things that we need. If we looked at the voter turnout in the most recent city council, roughly thirty percent of registered voters participated. On the flip side, seventy percent didn't. I mention this because I believe it is absolutely necessary that this council focus on the needs of this city. In my opinion, a primary need of this city is to focus on how we can increase revenue, control costs, reduce costs, expenses, when and where we can. So as using the frequently asked questions that were put forth on the the City of El Segundo website, again, thank you, I see that we can save an estimated over nine-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars over seven years. Not to mention it's going to put us in a position to avoid fines, which could be upwards of, you know, the ten thousand a day, which we've heard several times. This is really the the crux of where I come from and really what's dear at my heart is when I take this in context of the fact that the city has an unfunded pension liability that's over a hundred million dollars, a hundred and thirty to be exact. When I take this in the context of one person, less than one percent of the cities and towns in this state pay for its residents' trash, and we happen to be in that less than one percent. And when I take this in context of some of the bad deals that I've that I've seen and reading about historically, specifically one where we're the city subsidized a parking garage, where we're spending over sixteen thousand dollars a month for the next twenty years. And so the only fiscally prudent decision I believe this council should be making is to automate our solid waste collections. Thank you for the time. I appreciate the consideration.
Thank you, Vincent. Any other comments? It would be best if you.
I'm not hearing this thing good, so. Anyway, my name is Nancy Reinbold, and I live at seven forty West Mariposa. I'm up on the hill, on the sand dune, and some of the comments I've heard are not applicable to my residential area because we do have very high winds at times up on the sand dune. So I have two concerns. I do have a concern about the drivers because we up on the hill do have a relationship with our driver who is very nice and very helpful. And I hope that our drivers will be given preferential treatment when it comes to hiring. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that I am at the very end of the street and some of the properties, the original eighty-five, one-hundred-and-eighty-five-foot lots have been subdivided into thirds, and I happen to live on one of those. I'm an owner. Some are own, you know, postage stamp owned, which is mine, and some are properties owned by an individual, but there are three houses on it. So I'm concerned about parking on the days that the trash will be coming because a lot of people work, they're not home to take in their carts when things have, when they've been emptied. And I feel like that is really, it is going to impact the parking on our street and and on other blocks of Mariposa. That's it.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Members of council, Ray Growth, this General Manager for Republic Services, just wanted to add some comments. First, by thanking the community for the last few weeks, we've been getting an outpouring of support. A lot of them couldn't make it today, but I'm sure you've heard their voices as well. Also, just wanted to point out, and I think it's obvious, the the deck is being stacked for Edco, right, and for the automated, which there's there's benefits to go automated. We've made many, many conversions in my experience, my team's experience in this in this in this market as well. But some of the differentiators that were given between Edco and Republic Services, like GIS mapping, right, that was that was a good thing to reduce twenty percent of of your service days, right, to go from five to four. That's twenty percent service impact to your community, right, service day impact. We were going to keep those days the same. We run CNG trucks currently, so there is no benefit differentiator of trucks being ran. You're already at the emissions goals. Street signs, right? So if you do go manual, which it sounded like the the council wanted to the last time we visited, that's not a differentiator, right? If there's no parking sign changes. Billing, so there was, you know, a clear plan for Edco to transition the billing, only ones with experience. It's a very simple process to split billings, right? You add the house counts out, it's very simple what what the difference goes to the residence direct build versus the city. So that's just a process, right? That shouldn't be a differentiator. Diversion language to meet the fifty percent, it was stated that we were going to require a contract amendment. That wasn't the case. What we offered was savings to the city because we know the fifty percent is already being met, right? And so instead of doing mixed waste processing or other other methods to obtain fifty percent goal through the residential collection program, you can actually save some money, which we had to bake into our bid to meet the fifty percent residential goal. So I just wanted to point that out. You've already met that your CalRecycle goal, as you mentioned before, without recycling or diverting a single pound of residential waste, right? Several concerns over the manual-style collection and how it complies with CalRecycle, the CalRecycle requirement, and there was a play on words for for manual containers. That's that's partially correct, right? There's going to be mandated color requirements. We believe if the council still wants to maintain a manual style of collection, you can still accommodate by providing the containers with the color requirements, right? So you can do the green, you can do the brown and the black and the brown containers. So we believe that that is not an issue at this time, right? That's the green waste program implementation is the is the That's the green waste program implementation is the CalRecycle MCR that they're seeking. Transition risk, right? We believe Republic is positioned very well, 25 years of experience. We know the streets, we know every nook and cranny within the city. Our drivers are experienced. Our drivers, I appreciate that everybody's treating them as a commodity here, right, that they're going to get preferential treatment. I love that. That speaks to how we develop our people, but also how we retain our people, right? Finally, I just want to say that, you know, we have a great working relationship with staff, right? So no matter what council's decision is, if we are to be chosen, there is no bridge that we can't cross with staff and overcome and swiftly return counsel with an agreement that we can execute, move into any transition that's faced, that the city faces. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Protam, members of council, my name is Steve South. I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer of family-owned and operated EDCO. We're honored to be here tonight. I'm joined by our Senior Vice President, Mr. Efrem Ramirez, a 48-year employee of the company, Mr. Mark Perumian, who is our Division General Manager. Again, we're thrilled to be here. As I mentioned, we're a 51-year-old family, owned and operated company, three generations. Council and the city have the luxury tonight of having three fine proposers before them, including your incumbent. We're honored to be considered in the mix, we're honored to be proposing. We think that we bring the best overall value to the city, and we don't own or operate any landfills. We're incentivized to recycle through that model. We think there's a good match. But regardless of who you select, we think it's been a great process, and we commend staff on that process, both in terms of the thoughtfulness, the research, the outreach, the inclusionary process that you saw tonight in the presentation. When you look at some of the things we think we provide, customer service is really the foundation of our approach. You probably saw on our trucks the slogan, "We'll take care of it." That's been on our trucks for 51 years. "We'll take care of it." Again, we know that customer service is a foundation. A lot of what we're talking about here ultimately comes to change. A lot of that change is state-mandated, and it's being implemented in a meeting like this all throughout the state. But as we go through change, we understand that a key component of that change is public education and outreach. And it's dealing with issues on the dunes, in the dunes area, or dealing with issues on what's recyclable, what's not, how to increase participation, how to put effective programs into place, how to find direct ways to communicate with residents, whether that's texting, whether that's increased public education, quarterly newsletters, better outreach, the community meetings we identified. These are key components on any successful transition and a sustainable plan. And so we think that's something we bring to the table. Our trucks are not only natural gas, but the trucks we'll be serving are the new near-zero natural gas. So there's compressed natural gas, and then the newest models that are out are near-zero NOx, almost near zero. When you run them with renewable natural gas, the combination produces almost a carbon-neutral effect. And again, as we identified, we think we're the best overall value. You've heard a lot tonight, I won't address anymore. Other than if you have any questions, be available to answer anything you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll close public comments. Council comments? Yep, questions?
I'm disappointed tonight that we're not able to deal with all the pieces here. We've deferred the, who's going to pay for all this, to upcoming meeting, I guess in February. I'd just as soon like to handle the whole thing at once. The video that you showed, Ken, comparing the two styles or methods of service, in the video where the automated truck comes through, I don't know if you noticed that there was a piece of trash on the ground when he came through to fork up the containers. That trash is staying on the ground. They're not getting out to get that piece of trash. Republic's manual service, many people have reported to me, they get that piece of trash. Michelle, a question for you about the diversion rate. You said the residential was 12%. Overall, for the city, we're either at 80% or 78% in 2017. So can I assume that the difference, 68% or 66%, are because of the commercial?
I think that's a good assumption.
Is that how you look at that? So until this recent change, we were able to achieve the 50% goal just on the east side of town, just on the commercial side. Now they want the residents to pitch in, which they should. We should get this thing as close as we can to 100%.
Well, all along, residents and businesses were included in AB 939 as far as programs and the diversion requirement. That number that you're quoting is based on what they call this per-capita disposal equivalent. So it's an average of four years of how much was disposed at the city, by the city, both residential and commercial.
So are there a lot of cities that are at 80% or higher? Or is that really a high number?
That's a really high number. We gathered data from about 20 cities across the South Bay. The average was about 52%. And the other part of that is the cities, that target that the city has is 44.2 pounds per person per day, highest of any city. Average was about 8.7 for the other cities. So it's quite a difference between the typical cities and what the El Segundo has.
And it sounds like there's been a lot of threats of fines, but there haven't been that many fines, from what I've heard. And I'd like to know, those fines that were given, what are the circumstances in those cities that received them?
The cities that received fines were also found to not be implementing adequate programs, to not be implementing or making a good faith effort. And so although some of the cities that received fines may have, again, made that numeric goal, they were not in compliance because they didn't have the programs to support it.
Okay. This is back for Ken. Which of the three companies was the low bid for manual? When you reported in December, it looked to me like Republic was the low bid for manual by 75 cents or something. Is that still true, or is this how you calculate it?
That's true. So like the, from a contract perspective, the way we reported it in the staff report, Republic was the low manual bid at $1,222,983, followed by EDCO at $1,281,000 and $10.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, though? I just want to say, I'm going to do what I think the people of El Segundo put me up here to do, and that's to represent them. I have no fear about whether I'm re-elected or not because I stated the night I was sworn in, I wasn't running again. I run in one-term increments, as you saw. I was here from 8:00 to 12:00, took off from 12:00 to 16:00, came back 16:00 to 20:00. So I don't care about that. I just want to do what I believe the citizens put me up here to do. So that's, I'm going to do what I said I was going to do. No surprise, because that's the way I roll. Thank you.
Scott, anything? Or Chris?
I'll let Chris go.
This change of order confuses me. I have a series of convoluted and out-of-order questions, so pardon me if I drag you up to parade to the microphone. I was looking at the compliance order. It seems to have seven elements, only one of which pertains to residences, the green waste piece. The rest are all commercial or multifamily or special event. Is that correct?
Well, it was the green waste and the holiday tree.
Is special collection seasonal events? That's just the holiday trees? That doesn't include our concerts in the park and the other things?
Yeah, which they found were not being recycled.
Okay. So two of the seven deal with residential. The other five are multifamily and business and then process-oriented. Is that correct?
Correct. And it's important to note that the residential ones are in relation to AB 939 and the city's implementation of its source reduction and recycling element. So that's the green waste and this special collection. The others, having to do with commercial, are compliance with SB 341.
Okay.
The commercial. So it's two different regulations, two different topics, really.
So irrespective of what we do tonight, we may not solve our compliance order woes.
Actually...
I think we would make a leap forward in compliance, again, because of the AB 939, that part of the compliance order. And then the next step is to work on the commercial recycling.
And on the commercial side, I believe through adopting an ordinance to regulate the haulers and require reporting and some other issues, we can address those issues. And on the organics front, most, well, a lot of cities are still wrestling with implementing the organics recycling for the commercial side. It's been a bit of a, we're a little behind a number of cities, but that issue is being wrestled with by a number of cities. But I'm pretty confident that we can correct those issues through, again, adoption of an ordinance. I've talked to Ken about that, and I would expect we'd be coming forward with that relatively soon.
For monitoring compliance, there is a mechanism in all of the bidders? Just EDCO, or is the city responsible for monitoring its own compliance?
The city has responsibilities to CalRecycle to monitor compliance with AB 939 and 341 and 1826. And the haulers have the responsibility to provide, in terms of the commercial, to provide the services, commercial recycling and commercial organics. And then the businesses have the response, I'm sorry, the businesses have the responsibility to implement the program. And businesses can take advantage of a program offered by the haulers. Business can self-haul their own recyclables and take them to the recycling center or the organics processing facility. So there are various options for the businesses.
But in and of itself, nothing we do tonight will necessarily get us out of CalRecycle jail. We have a multi-step process to achieve that.
I think that the residential will, again, make a big step forward because I think that if the city stays the same course, in my professional opinion, I believe that CalRecycle will not deem that a good faith effort.
If I may, council member. One of the key facets of the reason that automated will help us in current compliance and in our compliance order, yes, a smaller portion is specifically related to the residential program. But on a programmatic level, CalRecycle, both local staff and then JCU, and ultimately the board, is looking at all of our programs. So to continue the path on a manual collection method, as Michelle said, would not be viewed as a positive change in our city. And, excuse me, from a staff perspective, having been working with them for two years, would not lighten the burden or possibly would likely require more resources for us to go through the trash and provide specific outreach and education and monitoring ourselves. And that's the key one, from my perspective. Outreach, education, monitoring is the city. And it could be the city staff, it could be consultant. But it's easier for a source-separated program to provide the education and the monitoring.
So their assessments are largely qualitative. There's a quantitative number in there, but they are judging best efforts in good faith?
Again, they look at both, the quantitative and the qualitative. And so in the compliance order, they indicated, yes, the city made that quantitative requirement, but the program requirement fell short.
Let's hope we meet them on a good day. Liability questions. Who owns the liability for failures of compliance? Because my reading of 1383 is that there's individual liability, right? If we find someone who, no matter what color cans we give them, does not want to divert, that person is individual, that resident is individually liable. Is that correct?
There are penalties for the residents, for the city, and for the haulers.
How would we go about allowing them to assess? Or is that assessable? Are these cans tagged? How do we know, are we going to, do we have someone in code enforcement dumpster diving?
Yes.
That's the, yes, that's the extent of it.
That is the future, yeah.
And are we sure that if we are providing automated cans, that that person with a 94-gallon bucket is for certain going to take his Miller Lite can and put it in that and not in the blue can? I mean, do we know...
No, no. And again, an aggressive education and outreach program would have to go along with the program to educate residents on what goes in the blue can, what goes in the green can, and what goes in the black can.
Could we similarly do that level of education with a manual program?
Yes. However, again, I don't believe that the manual collection will comply with 1383 because of the prescriptive requirements for containers and lids. I suppose you could provide containers, put labels on them, and then we would still need to go out and look in those containers and see if the recycling is recycling and the trash is trash and the organics is organic.
Well, I mean, we have to dumpster dive for code enforcement anyway, right? Irrespective of what the cans are. So if someone is not using a compliant can, if we opt to go to manual collection and say, "Well, here's what your cans have to look like. You wanted manual, here's manual, and here's what manual looks like," and they're not getting those, could we, could we be holding people individually liable right now for not covering their cans? And having crews screw the trash all over?
No, because that law isn't in effect until 2022.
No, I mean, even currently, if someone is, drags a can out full of chicken bones and it's all over the street, I mean, we could cite them individually right now, correct?
Yeah.
For littering and...
For littering.
Right. So we're talking about, I guess, my question is largely, are we talking code enforcement questions here and conflating them with making a decision upon method of delivery or method of collection?
The method of collection is pretty well described in the new regulations. I think it would be difficult to comply with those with manual. There would be, it would be much more time-intensive to look in those containers. Right now, you've got, you know, we saw pictures. People have many, many containers, and they may be boxes and bags and cans, et cetera. It would be pretty time-intensive for someone to do those inspections, much more so than if we had automated carts, which are very uniform and allow for what we call lid flipping, looking in the cart and identifying contamination in the cart.
I don't have more, I'm sorry. Oh, do we have, and Ken, this is a question that might, we're talking in big contractual numbers, but I think how people visualize this is their monthly bill, of which the city is asking them to pay 20 of an element. Do we have a breakdown of what the per-home allocation, what the per-home cost looks like for each one? And I know that some of these questions are rhetorical because you've told me what the answer is to this. But I think sort of for the, for the audience at home, I think it's important to see what the residential per-unit cost is.
No, I appreciate that, council member. The, let's focus on the two bids from EDCO and Republic. I'd say waste management was more expensive than both of them in both parts. EDCO's automated per-dwelling pickup rate was $21.98. Republic's automated per-pickup, it's a monthly cost, was $24.53. And the EDCO manual per-pickup was $26.98. And Republic's manual per-pickup cost was $27.76. And folks might go, oh, wait a minute, that's weird. The overall cost was lowest... The overall cost was lowest um, for Edco and automated and Republic for manual. Uh, recall on the RFP, there, there are a significant number of services outside of the just residential pickup, from the city events to the bulky pickups, to the shredding event and, and everything else that, that they're doing. And a big part of that is our uh, city municipal services. So that's where the entire bid comes into play, but those are the per dwelling uh, unit pickup costs.
I think that's a resonant number because it illustrates the city's cost differential per service. So our cost per home as a city effectively, Edco automated for Edco manuals, a five dollar difference per house per month. Uh, Republic automated to manuals, roughly six dollars per house per month, which is a significant difference in the aggregate. So I just think that in the way people conceptualize this, they don't tend to conceptualize it in overall value of the contract. In the world of, of, as one of our speakers said, what does it mean to me, it's important to say, what, what does it mean to me on that bill and what does it mean to us as a city? Because those numbers add up significantly over time when you're talking more than three thousand dwellings. So I, I know that I'm beating up on your presentation a bit up here, but I think that that is a resonant number in your favor uh, of, of what you present in terms of what we are asking people to use whatever small piece of property tax we get from them to allocate their resources for. Over to you.
That's it?
For the moment. I can't read my own handwriting on the bottom, so it'll take me a minute.
Earlier tonight, Mark, you briefed us on a few things. Do you care to share, can you share that with the, with the public or tell us the city attorney's opinion on the subject matter? I felt that the words that you shared with us are very important and, you know, as Dawn stated so eloquently, we were elected to represent the city and do what the city feels is, or the residents feel is best. And yet, you know, we are privy to information from time to time, which will lead us to make decisions, and I think it's important that the public knows. Is that okay, Mark, or am I asking you something that I shouldn't be asking you?
No, no, it's um, it's, it's been addressed to some extent, but um, I think it's appropriate. And, and I wanted to add a minute ago on the commercial side and for the council and for the public so that can understand, um, we're wrestling with a few commercial issues because the city has not franchised its commercial hauling. And so we don't have just one company out there, we have, how many, Ken? Twenty-four. So it's a bit more um, difficult for us to manage the commercial side of things as opposed to a city that has franchised the commercial. Uh, and so in order to deal with those twenty-four haulers, we're going to um, bring to council and ordinance so that we can require them to get us the information we need and to put, um, on the organic side, put the burden on them to deal with the customers and address that issue. So that's why I'm, I'm sure we'll have some issues in getting compliance, but we'll be able to demonstrate to CalRecycle the good faith effort that we're making to get the compliance and to bring those haulers uh, into compliance. And also we're going to bring to the council for consideration the potential of uh, of franchising the commercial side so that it could be collapsed into one or two haulers so that the burden on staff of administering the commercial side would be lessened. Cause the burden's going to grow as these regulations grow, and so the more haulers, the more businesses that we're going to have to watch and regulate. But with that said, the counterbalance will be Prop two eighteen and these things don't necessarily work together very well. I don't believe the city's going to want to um, have to subsidize the commercial side. And so if we were to get a Prop two eighteen protest from the businesses, in all likelihood, we would not want to have that franchise. And so that's a future issue, but um, it was brought up and I wanted to address the commercial side. On the residential side, um, I'm, I'm very concerned that given the compliance order, and this goes to your question, that um, this will be in essence sort of a slap in the face to CalRecycle and, and they may not take that well. That, you know, this, you know, and that we may find ourselves, may very well find ourselves on the side of being fined. And that um, the only way then to get out of that, and that could be in short order, is to then uh, go as quickly as possible to a manual automated um, type of system. And, and the time and effort that will be involved by the consultants, by uh, Ken's office, my office, um, we could easily spend a fair amount of money quickly and if fines were on top of that, um, this could become a very costly endeavor. And uh, and I didn't share this earlier, but I, I think it's somewhat um, relevant is that year, years ago, when the NPDS requirements came out, um, there were, the city of El Segundo and a lot of other cities were mandated to put the stencils out near all of the storm drains and to implement the street sweeping and these things. And, and El Segundo, before I got here, fought back on that and spent a lot of money fighting back on that. And ultimately, um, that didn't work out well for the city of El Segundo, they spent a lot of money on that fight and lost. And I, I feel the same thing is going to happen here on this issue is that a lot of resources will be expended on a battle that we will ultimately lose and that we'll end up having to go automated relatively soon anyway. That's my legal opinion about how I see, see things unfolding, I could be wrong, I don't have a crystal ball, but um, that's just my expectation of what likely will happen.
Thank you. I guess most of my, most of my thoughts here are really for our conversation, there are less questions for staff, so Carol, if you have questions for staff?
No, I'm, I'm good.
All right, well then, I guess we can start our conversation.
Yeah.
I, I can't begin to tell you what it, what it's like to sit up here and what it's like to uh, speak to residents face to face and have them tell you one thing. And you say, okay, I, I can, I understand that, I'll go do that for you, and then in that same breath, they contradict themselves and they want you to do something completely against what they just told you and it, and it's really hard. You know, it's really hard to be up here and understand that there, this is a rock and a hard place, we're in a lose-lose situation. And, you know, I think Bob said it well, Mr. Turnbull, and he said it was like a hot potato. You know, it's like, we keep kicking this can and, I mean, I, I wanna say, I made this statement to someone earlier this week, or last week, I said, I don't know if I want to die on this hill. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fight this fight on this hill, and it's like, am I the guy that dies over automated trash? Like, wow, that's amazing, that's gonna be my legacy, you know? Councilmember Nichol dies over automated trash. But, you know, I, I was talking to an, an older gentleman in town and uh, it was a great conversation, he had respect for me, I had respect for him. It wasn't really an argument, it was a, it was a disagreement, it was a conversation. And he said, how can you take away what we've had for so long, this unlimited trash collection? And he kept coming back to unlimited, unlimited, unlimited. And uh, and it stuck with me, you know, and that was my takeaway from my conversation with him, was the most important thing to him was his trash man and unlimited. And uh, tonight I was thinking about something that, you know, three of our normal cans fit into one of these cans. And I believe uh, you're allowed to have up to two trash containers, correct? But up to three green or three blue, which in the, in that equivalent, that's nine recycle cans, nine green cans and six trash cans.
Right, council member Nichol with Edco specifically.
With Edco specifically, and I, and I'm sure that the other haulers would offer the same thing, so I'm just gonna say that, you know, it's across the board. But, so what is that? That's eighteen plus six, that's twenty-four trash cans? That's almost five hundred gallons of trash, this is twenty-four trash cans. I mean, trust me, my house after Christmas, when I host cousin's Christmas and my in-laws buy a lot of presents for my kids, uh, it's embarrassing. You know, the amount of waste that is out in front of my house and the, the piles of recycling, it's, I go out there and I help my trash man put it in the bin because I feel embarrassed. But, I mean, I don't, I don't think that we are taking away, I know in your slide, Ken, you had unlimited crossed out, it was like redacted. But, I mean, when you do the math, that is essentially unlimited trash. So, I mean, no, no household in this town.
Should be.
Should be producing that much waste. And if they, go ahead, you got.
I'm sorry, so just a point of clarification that it would be in total offered four organic carts, four recycle carts and two trash carts. So ten times ninety-five would be nine hundred and fifty gallons of garbage.
Or ten times three, thirty trash cans.
Yeah.
Right? Thirty of our, of what we're used to today.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thirty of what we're used to today. Okay, so I just, I just wanted to kind of get that one off my chest because I feel if uh, um, Mr. Manzo, if you're watching, if you're listening, uh, thirty trash cans, I, I think we're still accomplishing your uh, unlimited trash. With an automated system, if we're talking about the two. You know, I, I feel like children, um, not to quote a song, but children are our future, haha. Our children can teach us a lot of things and when they're, uh, cause they'll, they'll ask a very pure question, you know, a very unadulterated question, a, a question that is not influenced by the lies our parents and grandparents told us or the experiences that we've had through life. And uh, you know, my son, he's uh, he's learned how to help out around the house and he has his plate and he didn't quite finish his, his food and he opens up the trash can and he goes, well, dad, where does the food go? It doesn't go in trash and it doesn't go in recycling. And I said, uh, and I'm, you know, the dumb parent, well, what do you mean? Just put it in the trash can, Scotty, you know, put your plate in the sink, be done. And he said, well, you know, at school, it's really important that we put the food in the food, in the green one, and then we put our blue stuff in the blue one, and you go, he goes, you know, Scott, daddy, you got stuff in this recycle can that's not even blue. You should, that shouldn't be recycling, that, and he's teaching me about waste. You know, and I just think like, we as a city, if, if us as a resident, uh, resident body, a culture, like, if we're gonna teach it in the schools to the kids, should we not be trying to kind of reinforce that at home? And, you know, change is not easy, and I've seen this change coming for quite some time, having friends and family in other cities across the country and in other countries. But, you know, the, the state is gonna start regulating what we do with our waste and how much we are allowed to throw away. And I, I don't know how else to sound empathetic to the droves of people in this town that really do not want to separate organics, recycling and trash and go automated. But it's coming, it's coming whether the, these four people choose to do it or if the next five people or the next five people after that. Mark, something you did say earlier that you didn't mention tonight that I thought was, uh, it just kind of popped for me was, if we enter into a seven-year agreement for manual pickup and we start to be fined, we can't unless we add language to be able to retroact, like, change that agreement or switch to automated somehow in the process. We're essentially locked into whatever uh, time is left on that contract while getting fined.
I, I, if, if the council decides to go manual, I would strongly recommend that there be a termination provision in that contract of not more than six months notice.
And now would that termination, I mean, that's the kind of thing where, would the residents feel like, well, hold on a second, that's how you're gonna sneak automated in there? Or would the hauler say, well, hold on a second, that doesn't fly with us because we have to buy new trucks to provide you manual service? And, you know, we're not gonna roll out all these cans this first time and then you're just gonna change it, so if you change it, it's gonna cost you this.
From, from the seat I sat in, I, I, I just, you know, I recommend that if you stay manual, that you have a termination provision of not greater than six months because it would be a really bad position for the city to be in legally, financially, to be in a seven-year contract. And let's say CalRecycle comes in and starts fining you, and you don't have the ability to change that other than through negotiating an agreement that you have no leverage with the hauler on. And to me, that would be a bad, really bad position to be in. So, you know, if you want to stay manual, again, I recommend a, a termination provision of not longer than six months. Six months is probably about correct to, cause then the city would need to go through the process of um, switching back, switching to automated. I, I, I just think it's a matter of time before you have to do it, and that time may actually be now, depending on what CalRecycle does.
Thank you. You know, the other thing is that we have a uh, a very diverse populace. You know, we have people the age of my grandparents that, recycling, like, what's recycling? You know, unleaded fuel, like, come on. And, you know, li, like, the world keeps changing, time is the one thing we cannot stop and evolution, we cannot stop evolution. And, you know, I, I think if we go to a three bin system, to Chris's point, like, no, we cannot stop that man from throwing his Miller Lite can in the trash, in the black bin. We can't, we're not gonna stop him now, we're not gonna stop him tomorrow. But if the blue bin is right there, I would like to think somewhere inside that man's soul, he's like, you know what, these kids these days, and maybe he throws it in the blue can. You know, and, I mean, I just, I look at, the three can system could potentially help people do the right thing for the globe. You know, for everything that we're trying to accomplish and, you know, God help us with this organic thing, I am not excited about this at all. But I understand that it's coming and, you know, I, the other thing that I think is coming is Amazon's gonna have to start picking up all these cardboard boxes off my porch. You know, breaking them down, it's not fun, it's not fun, getting them in this bin, it's, uh, it's not gonna be exciting for me. I'm, I'm with the, the town in regards to change is bad and this change is not something that I'm super excited about, but it's a change that I feel you elected us to sit up here and swallow the pills and make the tough decisions. And this is a decision that will bring us into compliance, save the city money and essentially tear off the Band-Aid. Change is coming, I don't think we should take a baby step, I think we should just do it all at once, you know, half the city will hate me for saying it, but it is what it is and that's how I feel. And uh, sorry, I think I just lost my under on the meeting time.
Yes, you did. Thank you, Scott. So um, I'm also gonna weigh in a little bit, um, I feel that, you know, one of the things I always tell my kids is just because you can doesn't mean you should. I feel that, um, you know, we as adults, we need to ensure that we are taking care of our environment and we can have to do as best we can to recycle as much as possible. Like Scott said, the schools are, you know, they have a no trash zone or trash schools, our schools are no trash schools. Um, we teach them at a very young age to recycle, to separate their, their trash. And I think as adults, we need to also walk the walk. You know, I know, I, just to defend the seniors, my mom is actually a big recycler, has been for years, and she's ninety. She believes she actually does separates her organics and her food waste today. You know, thank you, Mom, for teaching me to um, be prudent in, you know, taking care of the environment. I do feel that um, it's important, you know, we're gonna have to make this change regardless if we, we, you know, if we don't make it today, we're gonna have to make it in the near future. So I'd rather, you know, not waste the money and time to have to do this all over again because we'll be back up here within six months again if we don't make this change. The state of California, as you know, um, is very uh, conserva, they're not conservative, they're very uh, progressive when it comes to uh, taking care of the environment. And I just feel more and more changes are gonna come down the pike in making sure that we are doing the best to reduce our waste and recycle. So at this time, I'd like to move to approve, um, item number three. Oh, do you have anyone else for discussion? Okay, sorry.
I think it's very confusing the way we continually link recycling is, is the only component of automation, right? And I think that people who've certainly lived in plenty of other cities with far more onerous compliance regimes that have manual collection that will stab through your garbage bag and fine you a hundred dollars if they find something in the wrong place. Right, so what we're talking about are two different things. Now, one of them may, in some people's minds, estimations, make one easier than the other, but I think that we should bear in mind that if we have codes on the books now, that we are not enforcing. And it sounds, judging by the pictures, that we are not, and judging by the pictures, that we are not. And it sounds, judging by the pictures, that we are not, and judging by the testimony of people here, we are not. That magically, because we have cans with lids that are much bigger, and that you can't see to the bottom of, that we're suddenly going to become an incredibly rigorous enforcement regime. I think we may be telling ourselves a January first tale of all the times we're going to go to the gym. Right? So I, I think that it's just worth noting that there's a bit of a canard when it comes to this idea that everyone is going to recycle because the shape of the cans is different. We have a compliance regime that was mandated currently, that we are not enforcing in our code enforcement side. So if we are going to take a giant plunge in code enforcement, I think we need to have a realistic sense of what we're doing. So I will wait, I, I will, I will put that out there. I think that the compliance bugbear of CalRecycle, given that, what a small piece of this is, and how squishy their, uh, metrics for success are, is something that bear in mind, uh, as we go chasing government compliance with all things from Sacramento, there's certainly no guarantee that taking a bold stroke and ripping a Band-Aid off will do anything except move the goalposts further. Because I think we see that every time we get up here on a different issue, whether it's housing compliance, whether it's fuel compliance, whether it's fuel efficiency compliance for, for city vehicles, every time you make a well-intentioned step, they take a well-intentioned step backward, usually by authored by someone who has never been to El Segundo, and may have never left the Bay Area. Uh, I will go on record to say that I really like not breaking down my Amazon boxes. Right? Because who has time to do it on a rainy Tuesday morning? I'm not gonna do it. Uh, I do, much the chagrin of my family, compost on my counter, uh, which is disgusting, but that's where we put it. Why? Because it's the easiest place to throw the food, so it doesn't go to the disposal and clog things up. Uh, I will say this, I find the per-house savings of fifteen thousand dollars per month to the city by going to automated over manual, uh, too compelling a stewardship issue to turn down. So I find many of the arguments for going to automation, uh, logically tenuous, uh, but I find that one too compelling as a steward of the public purse. So, uh, having aired my grievances with linking diversion and collection, and having aired my grievances with threatening people with fines that we are unlikely to ever receive, nor will this necessarily treat or mitigate the risk for, uh, I will vote for Edco automation.
So let's make a motion.
Hold on, wait. Can I do this again? Because I tried it last time, but it didn't work.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to award the RFP process to Edco, and to, go ahead, Greg.
Oh, um.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, if you could read the mo- the, the motion that's on the agenda, that would be the correct first step in this process to get to where you're, where you're going.
This is item, what item is this?
Three.
Seven?
Three.
We've been here a long time.
So you're, you're directing staff to enter into negotiations with Edco on an exclusive seven-year franchise agreement in the form approved by the city attorney. We will then go start working with Edco, we'll work out the details, we'll, we'll bring it back, right? To provide automated services.
Okay, so I'm just reading the description then. Right? So I am moving to recommend staff to enter into negotiations for an exclusive franchise to Edco Waste and Recycling Services to provide automated residential and municipal solid waste hauling services. Right?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
All right, passed. All right, thank you, everybody.
Can we have a, can we have a short recess?
Yeah, we'll have a short recess for five minutes. Thank you. All right.
The crowd has thinned out for those viewing from home. Stay with us, we should be here till maybe midnight. No, hopefully not. All right, item number one. Consideration, and this is gonna be a public hearing, so I'll read the text on item one, and then I'll go to some talking points here. Consideration and possible action regarding environmental assessment EA twelve thirty-two and Zone Text Amendment Number ZTA eighteen oh six to allow massage establishments as a conditionally permitted use in the commercial center C four zone. The adoption of this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to fourteen Cal Code regs one five zero six one B three, because it consists only of minor revisions to existing zoning regulations and related procedures, and can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the ordinance will have a significant effect on the environment. The applicant is street retail. Fiscal impact none. So, this is a time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing. City clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. City clerk, has any written communication been received regarding the public hearing?
Wait a minute. Yes, on this one, yes.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Carpenter, who will present tonight?
Sam Lee, our Director of Planning and Building, will make a brief presentation.
Thank you, I have a very brief presentation. Um, this item is a request from the applicant, Federal Realty, to make changes to their C four zone. Uh, changes to allow massage establishments in the zone. Um, before I get started, there was one public communication from Continental Development. Um, they believe the changes will allow greater flexibility in the retail space, and, um, they support the, the ordinance. So, the map shows, um, the city's C four zone area. It's Plaza and the Point, owned by Federal Realty. Um, and it also shows, um, former Honeywell site and Air Products. Just east of the C four zones is the Continental Park, which is zoned at M U S zone. So originally, um, Plaza was, um, was, uh, was intended to be strictly a retail center, um, but with changes in the, the retail environment recently, um, they find the need to evolve with, uh, with the changes of, of time. Becoming a, um, becoming a commercial mixed-use center, um, a combination of retail, restaurant, fitness, personal service. It's really become a one-stop destination for shoppers. And, uh, they believe that it's a, it's a way to ensure Plaza's viability in the future. So the use is, um, the, the massage establishment use is already allowed in the M U S zone, uh, as I pointed out, just east of where the C four zone is, and it's allowed with the CUP today. This request is to allow the same use in the C four zone. So if, um, if the council chose to approve the ordinance tonight, um, the approval process would be, um, a CUP would be required, um, each application would be reviewed on a step-by-step, uh, case-by-case basis. Um, state certification is required for all establishments. Um, background check is completed by the El Segundo Police Department for all, um, users, owners. Um, the public is noticed of the, of the new use. Um, there's a time for public input, and of course, conditions can be, um, added to the conditional use permit. Planning Commission has unanimously, um, recommended approval. And with that, um, staff recommends approval, um, couns- ask, ask council to introduce this item tonight, and schedule second meeting on February fifth. And, uh, Mr. Jeff Kraschek from Federal Realty is here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, so the public hearing is now open for public input. Mr. Kraschek, if you would please, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, we've worked diligently with staff and appreciate all their input. Uh, this really just is designed to give us some flexibility as retail continues to evolve. Uh, we can evolve with it. You've probably seen a number of changes happening at Plaza El Segundo, uh, with Nordstrom Rack replacing Cost Plus, and a soon-to-be-announced tenant replacing, uh, Chase and Sammy's, uh, that have both vacated. This just gives us greater flexibility, especially for the portion of the project now known as The Works, uh, which was formerly known as The Edge. And again, we appreciate staff's, uh, working with us on this and coming up with conditions, and all of, any user going forward would be subject to a conditional use permit, so it still gives the city the chance to review and make sure that the uses and users are reputable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments, public input? Okay, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
So I'm moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh. Council discussion.
I think just as long as people understand there's a conditional use permit is required, depending on who wants to fill that space. Uh, I think that's people's probably only concern, we're seeing the end of the different allowance that a massage parlor would entail. But, uh, other than that, there's no, no, nothing further from me.
Yeah, I think Burke Williams technically would be a massage parlor.
Yeah.
Right, like a day spa? So if you tell, if this was, you know, day spa in the retail zone.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, I just wanna say the Planning Commission voted five oh on it, so I am good.
I'm willing to, uh, carry the ordinance so that it can come back to the next meeting.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bren.
So then the council, uh, an ordinance approving environmental assessment number EA one two three two, and Zone Text Amendment Number ZTA eighteen dash zero six, amending the El Segundo Municipal Code to permit massage establishment as a conditionally permitted use in the commercial center zones. I understand it's been introduced by council member Brand, and will be brought back to the next council meeting for potential adoption.
We're voting on this, right?
No.
No, we don't need to, we're done. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hensley.
After all that.
Thank you.
I know.
Okay, item two is related to consideration and possible action regarding environmental assessment EA twelve thirty-one, Zone Text Amendment Number ZTA eighteen oh five, to amend Article A of Chapter seven of Title fifteen of the El Segundo Municipal Code related to the medium-density residential, MDR, overlay zone. This amendment will preserve the existing overlay while making important updates to bring it into compliance with the new Smoky Hollow specific plan. This is a time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing. City clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
None for this item.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Carpenter, who will make the presentation?
This will be, this will be Mr. Lee as well.
Thank you.
Yes, um, if you recall, um, Mayor Boils and, and council members, uh, during the adoption process for Smoky Hollow specific plan in last October, uh, the plan included removal of the residential overlay zone, um, while keeping the underlying commercial zoning. Um, that discussion impacted two areas. Um, first is an area near Nevada and Grand. Um, second area was, um, near Grand, Kansas, Illinois, and Holly. Uh, and of course, uh, the third area was, um, And of course, the third area was the previously activated residential zone. So, at the hearing, council directed staff to not remove the multifamily overlay zone, so minor changes were made to the Smoky Hollow plan so that that plan could proceed with the approval, and we said that we would be back with the corrections to the overlay zone. With this ordinance, that completes that process and preserves the overlay zone as it was. And again, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Again, staff recommends the council to introduce this ordinance tonight and schedule second meeting, second reading for February 5th.
If I might, just for the record, when the specific plan was brought forward previously for the council, the mayor and council member Nicol recused themselves because of sources of income and property interest that were located near, or at that time, the amendments to specific plan affected the entire specific plan area. This is a very limited area of the specific plan and a very limited change. It's actually more of, the use is already there, it's more of just implementing what was already in place, but in any event, these are both, this area is more than 500 feet away from those property interests and income interests, so that's why you're able to participate this evening.
Thank you. All right, public hearing is now open, Mr. Carpenter, we already covered that, public hearing is now open for public input. Does anyone there like to comment on this? No, okay, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five oh.
Glad to introduce the ordinance and push it to the next meeting.
Okay, anyone, any council discussion, or, no, okay. Thank you, Dr. Brands, Dr. Brand will introduce the ordinance.
If I could read that by title, an ordinance of the city, city of El Segundo approving Zone Text Amendment Number ZTA 18-05, amending Article A, medium-density residential, MDR zone of Chapter Seven Overlay Districts to Title 16 zoning regulations of the Municipal Code, has been introduced and will be brought back at the next council meeting for potential adoption.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, moving on here. Recision of Brown Act commitment in accordance with Government Code Section 54960.2e, consideration of possible action to rescind the commitment made by the city council on November 5th, 2013, not to hold further closed-session meetings regarding real property negotiations with regard to ES CenterCal LLCs, otherwise known as CenterCal. Proposal to enter into a ground lease agreement to lease the driving range portion of the Lakes Golf Course from the city for the purpose of developing a top golf facility. Fiscal impact unknown, depends on whether legal proceedings are commenced.
Yes, mayor and council, I will address this. Back in October 2013, Ms. Deborah Geist had sent letters to the city alleging there had been Brown Act violations with regard to the city council meeting in closed session to discuss the CenterCal Top Golf Project. And at that same time, the city was, in essence, wrapping up the negotiations, and one of the options the city had at that time was to simply agree that it was not going to go into closed session any further to discuss the negotiations, and that way, there would be no potential for litigation at that time. So, the city council took that action because it was essentially done negotiating and didn't have the need to go back into closed session. So, here we sit, five years later, and there is the potential need to go into closed session on, maybe, you know, for a meeting or two would be my estimation, to deal with CenterCal Top Golf. This is a different project, a different negotiation. It's not entirely clear to me that this Brown Act provision, and what we're doing this evening is that this commitment that was made five years ago can only be done, undone at a council meeting like this, and in this method, we had to give Ms. Geist 30 days' notice, and under the Brown Act, in order to undo this commitment the council made, the city council has to meet and make that determination that you want to go back into closed session potentially, and make a determination that would allow you to do that, that would allow, in theory, Ms. Geist to file the legal action that she could have filed five years ago. Now, I think this is all a very odd process at this point. I don't know that it even applies because it's a new deal, it's been five years, none of you sitting up here were on the council at that time, and so the violation actually goes against council members, and it's none of you. And I want to say that, to my knowledge, there was nothing wrong with what the council did five years ago, they did meet in closed session. There were allegations that it wasn't transparent, things weren't done publicly, but as outlined in the staff report from five years ago, at that time, there had been about a dozen public meetings on the item, there had been extensive outreach to all the service groups, park and recreation held meetings, the council held meetings, it was on the website as far as exactly what the proposal was, and the press, both The Herald and The Breeze, had ran articles on this. Almost every council meeting had members of the public here talking for or against the project. There was criticism about the council not going through the type of RFP process that this council has gone through, but again, it all happened very publicly and transparently, and people were complaining about, well, there were people in support of and people opposed to it, but the process was a very public process. So, I don't believe there were any Brown Act violations. So, with that said, the action in front of council tonight is to, it's being proposed that you rescind that determination that was made, so the council could convene in closed session, and I do think there's gonna be, now, you don't have to, and you could discuss some things publicly, I think it would be advisable on a couple of the financial deal points to talk about those privately, which is the way real property negotiations are normally done. And I think that the risk of a lawsuit should be very minimal. Again, I'm not even certain that we have to go through this procedure, given that this happened so long ago, and really on a different proposal, but if we don't do this, and we're, and a court were determined that we were supposed to do it, the mere fact that we didn't go through this process would be a violation. So, it's the more prudent step to take. I did reach out and try to contact Ms. Geist, and she's a lawyer, and I wanted to have a discussion with her about, you know, whether, you know, we could agree that this just wasn't an applicable process any longer. I did not get a return phone call from her, but I did try to resolve this with her informally and was not able to do that. And I note that she has sent a letter which she is concerned that the council will do things that are less than transparent. I think that's generally the nature of her letter. So, my recommendation would be that the council take the action that's recommended, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, council members, any questions for Mark? Any council discussion? All right, I'll move approval of this recommendation, rescission of the Brown Act commitment, based on what I've heard.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, four one. All right, I think we're gonna, we're going to defer, defer again the discussion about Calpers, only because the deck is even longer than Mr. Berkman's, and necessarily so, I might add, but anyway, Joe's already probably left the bill, oh, there he is. I think he's banking, he's banking. I think, if you wouldn't be offended, Mr. Lilio, we'll do this in the next meeting in February, because it deserves a lot of time when people are bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. Okay, great, so we'll pass on that. Item six, consideration and possible action to announce the appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Council and the Technology Committee, and I'm pleased to announce the following appointees. We had a great, another great batch of applicants coming forward for these opportunities, some of these members are returning. So, we have, for Economic Development Advisory Council, we have Richard Lundquist, who is probably the longest-serving member of any committee, commission, or board, he was there from EDAC Day One, incredible contributor, obviously. Al Keahie, who's the chair, is continuing. Bob Healy, who's been on, now I think this is his second term, is continuing, maybe it's his third. And then Matthew Tompkins, who is a new appointee, is, who's got a really varied background in aerospace, SpaceX, Air Force Base, et cetera, will be joining. And then in the Technology Committee, we have Todd Felker, who's being appointed. So, congrats to all of them, they have already been made aware of that. All right, item, let's see here. Yeah, let's see, we go straight to consent, so, let's see, do we have any polls from the consent calendar? Okay, no polls, great. Do I have a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five oh. Great. All right, moving on to reports, city manager.
Very happy that our Aquatic Center, the El Segundo, Weisburn Aquatic Center is now open. Thank you to Meredith Pettit and her staff, Ken Berkman and Public Works, and to Blake Silvers over at Weisburn for helping us open that facility up, and I'm sure information's available on our website and through REC One for people that want information on availability and hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. City attorney?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. City clerk?
Not this evening, thank you.
Thank you. And also the city treasurer, council member Pimentel.
Only that we ask our citizenry to be involved in the body politic, and I think that we have had a tremendous example of them writing up to four or 5,000 words on solid waste or pools to us in the preceding week, and that is well-regarded, and they come in here to speak to the council, and I think it's important to have that input, and there's several historical anniversaries that will come between now and our next meeting, I think the Eighteenth Amendment anniversary is tomorrow, so that's prohibition, so if we think pools and trash are divisive, try banning booze before World War II, but also more importantly, Martin Luther King Day comes up where we celebrate people who strove to be able to achieve this level of participation, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Council member Nicol?
Couple things, I attended the Young Americans presentation on Sunday night at the El Segundo Performing Arts Center, and wow, if you haven't gone, I highly recommend going, it's pretty awesome, and it's great to see so many of the children from El Segundo participating, completely stepping outside of their comfort zone. That is, it's the coolest part, I mean, yeah, it was fantastic, my kids loved it, I loved it. The new pool opening was great, I commend Greg for wearing a short-sleeved shirt that day, he busted out an old-school El Segundo rec-park polo, had to be at least 20 years old, it was great, freezing, I had a jacket on, I was cold, but a lot of people got in the pool, I did not, I hid behind a white lie to my daughter saying I'd get in when the sun came out, so, sun did not shine that day, I did not get in that pool. And then, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the fire department. Last night, my wife and I had a bit of a scare with our daughter, and it went from me being the dad that was like, looking at my child saying, "Stop being so dramatic," to, "Oh, wow, this could be something terribly wrong," and calling 911 for probably the first time in my entire life, and then having fire department show up to my house, and Chief Donovan, they were nothing but professional, they didn't look at me or talk to me like I was one of their council people, they spoke to me like Joe resident, and, you know, went down the line of the questions, and ended up giving my daughter and my wife a ride to Little Company Mary, and I met them there a bit afterwards. Everything is okay, it was not an appendicitis after a series of plenty of tests, but that was what it was presenting as, and she's fine. But I just want to remind residents of town, I am looking forward to getting that bill for that ambulance ride in the mail, I will gladly submit it to my insurance company and have my insurance company pay it, and if they don't, then I'll pay it, and, or I won't, because we don't enforce it. But I look forward to getting the bill in the mail.
Thank you, I'm glad she's okay, thank you. Dr. Brand?
I'll pass.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, so I also want to congratulate everyone on the Aquatic Center, a lot of people got in, Arisia and Jeanette have been working diligently to get enough people, enough lifeguards hired and program scheduled, and it's been a lot of work, so thank you very much. I wanted to also congratulate the police department for winning the battle of the badges, and thank you for everybody who showed up for that event. I know we'll be doing the trophy presentation the next couple, at, soon we'll be doing the presentation, but thank you for the city and the community for coming out and participating, participate, it's really, you know, you don't realize how lucky we are to have the Lakers facility here in town and pay a nominal fee to go watch really professional basketball, because actually on the game that we watched from the South Bay Lakers, there was actually three Lakers playing on, playing the game, and they said more and more often you see a lot of the Lakers actually play the game so that you can get playing time, so if you want something to do with your kids, it's not too expensive, and want to enjoy like real good professional football, basketball, just go down to the Lakers facility. I also want to thank the Herald for doing a year-end review of all the things that El Segundo has done and changed, and capital, recapping what we as a council have done, it's really good to see in print, you know, you don't realize how much we've actually accomplished, and we see it in print, it's quite impressive, so thank you, Brian, for putting that together, Brian Simon, and I also want to wish Mr. Boils, or Drew Boils, a happy birthday, it's coming up this week, so, do we all break out in song? So, anyway, but thank, congratulations, and thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Let's see, I don't have much to add, although I will say this, police did win, they did have a few more subs than the firefighters, I was just gonna say, you guys are a little thin in your squad there, chief, but it was a great game nonetheless, and the police really rallied this year quite a bit, so it was a good time. That's all I have, we're gonna open up for public communications.
Good evening, thank you once again, Jack Axelrod, 317 Richmond Street Apartment B, it's a small building at the back of the lot, between the alley and Richmond Street. I rent the upstairs, somebody else rents downstairs. Thank you all for your obvious concern for the welfare of the city. Very impressive, but I'm easily impressed. Thanks for your diligence, I'm gonna suggest that, once again, some suggestions I made before, I'll be quick because I know it's late, I don't know it's late. I'd still like to see the city, if that's the city seal now, I'd still like to see a, God, I can't even think. I'd still like to see a presentation of a new city seal, one that actually refers to the city. You can't read, first, not only the fact that you can't even see what that is, it's silly, that's not what the city is about, and we ought to get rid of that. I'd like to see, I'm also suggesting that you have a competition for a name change. I don't, I'm embarrassed to be living in a city that is named after an oil refinery, that's, surely we can do better than that. I know that you're all very busy, I'm aware of that, so I'll suggest that you have something more to do, is, I'm embarrassed... I'm embarrassed to do that, but I want to do it anyway. I suggest that there be a council report by each of the members on the condition of the beach and the condition of the ocean. Both of those, actually, the beach is not bad. I walk down almost every day, when it's not raining, on the beach. I feed the pigeons in the, at the park, at the parking lot, at the foot of Grand. And I have read that the pigeons do, are capable of facial recognition. I don't think they recognize my face, they just know that I have seeds to give them. But they hover around, they come, they come. Where else am I here? Oh, I once offered a complaint about drones, and this was long before the matter of drones ever came up. And I'm still offering, there should be a city ban on drones flying over El Segundo for any purpose. Where am I here? Oh, I suggest a competition for the redesign of the central square of City Hall. I mean, it's, there's nothing going on over there. Now, I'm bearing in mind that I speak as an architect. I studied, I majored at, you don't know who I am. I majored in architecture at Berkeley. I'm licensed to practice in the state of Maine. I have works in Maine, in Bangor, in the Bay Area, and in Northern California. I was not a gifted architect, but I was an architect. The stuff that's out there now is embarrassing. And I'm not, I don't regret not being an architect now. My gift was very small, so what, I just hope I didn't do a lot of damage, but maybe I My gift was very small in a great number of areas, and this is by way of embarrassing an acknowledgement of how little that I have done. I have not worked on any committee of the city. I once applied to the, to El Segundo High School as a visiting director. I've studied acting with maybe arguably the greatest and most effective teacher of acting in the United States, that's Hilda Hagen, she died six years ago. I offered my services and received no information, received no feedback from anybody on the faculty, and I got lazy and I lost interest. I don't do anything at all now, and I'm embarrassed by that, that I don't do anything for the city. I'm not on any committee. I just get up here once in a while and complain about something. I'm good on complaining. I wish you all to be well, and I thank you all for your services to the city, which are obvious and enormous. The time that you take is terrific. Thank you all for your attention this evening. Be well, stay well. Avoid frustration. You can't do that, but you can try.
Thank you, Mr. Axelrod. Okay, seeing no more public communications, we will adjourn at 10:29. Thank you.
The under.